Sherry has to sit next to me so we can have the girl's side.
I'd like to call to order the June 25, 2018 regularly regular meeting and study session of the Littleton Planning Commission. Could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Schwartzbacher. Chair Protem Stallman.
Here.
Chair Rudnicki.
Here.
Commissioner Bolt.
Here.
Commissioner Brydenbaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Coronado.
Here.
Commissioner Almond.
Here.
And it looks like Commissioner Reynolds and Commissioner Miller are not here tonight.
Okay. What's the usual procedure? Should we wait a few minutes or should we go ahead and seat them now, their alternates?
As they're not here, let's go ahead and seat Commissioner Coronado and Almond.
And what happens if Commissioner arrives conveniently late? What do we do?
If a Commissioner arrives at the end of that agenda item, the alternates would return to their seat and then new the Commissioner would commence at the beginning of the next agenda item.
Okay. So it would be if they arrive during a agenda item, they have to wait. Okay.
They would have to wait.
Welcome aboard. Come on up. On tonight's menu, we have two items, a resolution on the Bellevue Corridor Plan, and then we'll adjourn and have a study session for the development concept for a site at Mineral and Santa Fe. You have before you the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, they'll stand. Minutes to be approved. Y'all had a chance to watch the video several times. Do we have a motion, please?
I have to get back to it.
You're the usual.
I know. Hang on, I gotta get back to it. Go for it.
I move to approve based on the recording secretary's certification, the June 11, 2018 action minutes for June 11, 2018 regular meeting of Littleton Planning Commission.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Vote, please. Okay, yeah, Dan, you were missing the last meeting, correct? Okay. So we have a 6-0 vote to approval? Thank you. Next item up is public comment, public comment for general business or non-agenda related items. You'll have three minutes to speak. We hope that you would be civil. When you have 30 seconds left, a recording secretary will hold up a yellow card. When your three minutes are up, she will hold up a red card. We have a list. If you're not on the list and you wish to speak, we'll ask for additional speakers when we get to the end of the list. First up is Lisa Scarsy.
I want to make sure I get.
Did you speak directly into the microphone?
Good evening, everyone. I want to make sure I acknowledge all of y'all. Thank you for the opportunity.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Lisa Sacree. I'm District One. I live on Exarban Avenue. And for those of you who didn't know, Exarban is actually the Nebraska spelled backwards. So I'm sending, I sent you all an email earlier today as well as council and Noel as well as the lift board because I wanted everyone to be in the loop of my thoughts. And so I'm sharing them with you tonight so it could be publicly heard and welcome committee, community members. Like I mentioned, my name is Lisa Sacree. I live in District One. I live behind Columbine Square. Every day in morning, my husband and I, various times of the day and weekend, we come out on to Irving Avenue, which is located right behind Columbine Square, to connect with Bellevue. Bellevue is our main road to wherever we want to go, and we love Bellevue. I take it wherever I can as well as Santa Fe, just for the, just for the sake of it. Right now, it's quite peaceful and quiet. Occasionally, we have an abundance of cars from apartment complexes parked on Irving. That makes it a little cramped going north. Can only imagine that it might get worse if things start to develop over in that area. So thank you for holding your vote last time to accept ideas about what should be done to improve Bellevue until you have more facts. This decision should not be taken lightly or rushed. For much is at stake here, especially when it is concerns the citizens and their communities who are most impacted every day by this change the city wants to implement. I'm calling on the city manager, community development members, council and lift board members, and you, the planning commissioners, board members, to bring the Columbine Square developers physically to the table. Right now, you only have two legs to a three-legged stool. The city and the board members are one leg, the citizens are another leg, while the developers make up the third leg. Until the developers have a seat at the table or are having honest discussions with all who are involved as to how best utilize their space to benefit the city through economic growth in the surrounding communities, both the Bellevue Corridor Plan and the federal Bowles Plan will be unbalanced. I have stated in public comments two weeks ago, I can't spend money at an apartment complex, but I can at restaurants and stores, and this community is starving for them. It is sad to know and to see that a very successful and profitable development firm who is willing to have the city, including participating boards such as yourself, to do the work for them and then take the citizens' hard-earned money through tiff money to possibly develop their property to line their pockets with tons of profits, leaving everyone affected by their actions high and dry while laughing to the bank.
Lisa, your time is up.
Let us, city, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Newfinkie?
My name is Linda Knewfinkie, and I live in the 4th District. I did my homework like you requested, and I consolidated and categorized the feedback you and the city received from the Bellevue Corridor public planning process. I was surprised that the comments were all over the board, making it difficult to apply to the plan. But what hit me is the surveys and public input do not provide actionable data. The responses are lumped together and not categorized to identify if the responses came from business owners in the area or business owners out of the area, developers, those that live in the area, those that don't live in the area, and those that live adjacent to the corridor. Shouldn't the comments of the citizens who live in that area weigh more than other comments? So here are some examples of how the information is not actionable and questionable. Who, who is asking for high density? Are the people that are living in that area asking for high density? Your public comment doesn't show us those details. So what I did glean from the public comments for Columbine Square said retail will never work in Columbine Square. And then it says, redevelop this area to include retail and multifamily housing or mixed use. And another one says, include high-density housing and keep big-box chains away, have three stories at the most, provide distinctive architecture, don't have any apartments, and provide for small business uses, create a senior community, turn Columbine Square into a park, movie theaters, patio homes, and never any fast food. So the point is that the comments are all over the place from this list, which is shortened by me. It's hard to figure out what the neighborhood wants because you've made no way of knowing if the comments were made by neighbors or somebody who possibly lives in Tajikistan. A community forum, a community open forum with posters held by an outside agency may not be the best way to get input. Talk to people, really talk to people and listen to what they have to say. And then here's another word on the answer property. The developer already has an extremely generous zoning, and they're proposing an even more generous change to their zoning, density and uses. The developer is proposing an increase of FAR from, in some cases, 3 to 1 to 40 to 1. As an example, the answer property parcels B, C, and D have a FAR of 3 to 1, parcel E has an FAR of 35 to 1. Changing this from 3 to 1 to 40 to 1 is extreme. As a comparison, the B2 area is zoned with an FAR of 2 to 1. These proposed changes ignore community character and common sense. These increases don't fit into Littleton. Thank you for your attention to these matters. Thanks.
Linda, I think the, it's .3 to 1 or .4 to 1, not 3 to 1 or 4 to 1. Okay. Just keep that in mind. Thank you. Don Brunz?
Don Brunz, District 4. Much of the city's leadership leaves the impression it is having difficulty hearing and therefore responding to what affected residents and businesses are saying. Each of you has more detailed observations I sent yesterday, yet to appreciate them, you'll need to grasp. They're more difficult to understand underpinnings, and I'll attempt to convey at least some now. In professional practice, I learned there's a way to accurately assess public desires and preferences and then use that input to guide responsive plans and project assessments. Now, as then outmoded operating paradigms, ways of thinking and acting got in the way. A genuinely integrated conceptual framework does not readily fall into anyone's lap. It must be able to answer the most basic question, what do you think is going on? As Maxwell explains, an integrated conceptual framework helps answer what out there is it that you're studying or planning and evaluating? What's going on with those things and why? Absent such a conceptual framework, the city cannot know where its plans and project assessments are going. I showed this diagram to you two weeks ago, and now I think, I'd like to have you think about it in terms of what's going on across these four key project and planning assessment dimensions. Level four outcome objectives describe planned beneficial end results, but only if they're established upfront where they can guide and constrain the remaining three dimensions. Littleton residents, commuters, visitors, and local businessmen, not the corporate growth machine, have all been talking about these, but they're not yet showing up in plans and project assessments because public desires and concerns for these are not yet being heard, recorded, or analyzed. Level three, community character conditions, can define existing land use and prescribed desired future conditions. Affected publics especially have been talking about these. So have planners. It's clear they don't yet know how to do that, so character's not being captured. Neither's are being factored into plans and project assessments as place-based prescriptions. Yet, character is a huge outcome determinant, so genuinely responsive assessments and plans have to address character, both in terms of supply and demand. It's not that hard. I tentatively mapped the existing character of both areas under your consideration this evening, and I've got the maps here, but we don't have time, using Kendrickan Keith's Community Character Classification System. I used the results to help frame my observations. Done right, responsive character prescriptions can ensure that desired positive outcomes are achieved and undesirable adverse outcomes are avoided. Levels two and one, project and site action planning, are the dimensions that consume community development resources beyond which your plan and project assessments seldom go. So neither the third nor fourth dimension ever gets addressed. This old planning paradigm is 40 years old. It serves neither affected publics nor the city and its visitors, only developers. So there it is. You have my comments, and you can review this presentation on video to let it sink in. I know, because everyone struggles to make this necessary paradigm shift, and so did I. Your chairman's move to rethink the Bellevue Corridor effort and bring it back to commission this evening is encouraging. Thank you very much. I'm eager to hear how you respond.
Carol Brezak?
Would you please give your name and address for the record?
Oh, I forgot to say it. Don Brunz, District 4, 7332 South Garcia Street. And thank you again so much for making this gizmo work.
We gave you extra time for fiddling with the machinery, so.
Hi, I'm Carol Brezak, live in the 4th District. What you're doing tonight with this plan is very, very important, particularly to the people that live over there, and I believe it deserves quite a bit more discussion than probably what it will get. As I was looking at it, I believe there's only one reason for this document to even exist, and it has to do with Columbine Square. If Columbine Square wasn't there, this would not have been rushed through as a priority. I remember at the last meeting, Mr. Kemp told us that this document is not regulatory, and that cut my wheels thinking, well, if it's not regulatory, how will it be used? And in reading it, that actually says that it is, that it contains regulatory tools. So I don't know if it's regulatory or not, and I hope you know the answer one way or the other. But as I was looking at it, I decided to go back and look at some of my old files, and I've got the Goddard Neighborhood Plan. It was just updated in 2016. It's not bad. But there is, in my mind, a contradiction between this and what I see in the Bellevue Corridor Plan, which is not regulatory supposedly, but this is supposed to be. And then I went further back in my file, and I found the Columbine Square analysis base that was written in 2003. And it's very interesting to look back at what they were writing in 2003. It's actually a document that's worth going back and looking at. And I guess the point that I'm making is that what you're doing tonight is so important that this cannot be looked at in isolation. It needs to be looked at in conjunction with the other, what my daughter calls shelfware because it was done and it's sitting on a shelf somewhere. And look at it as a whole. In fact, in this Columbine Square Plan, it talks about the importance of focusing retail use as much a policy decision as an application of economic and market forces and should be considered from a larger planning and city design context. A concerted planning effort examining the corridors surrounding Littleton should establish a framework for understanding the relationship of the individual properties to the community and their role in the vision for the city. In other words, you do not look at the corridors in isolation. You look at the corridors citywide and determine how one impacts the other. And this document is actually pretty doggone good in explaining why you need to do that and what can be done over at Columbine Square. And I think it would be a very interesting exercise to go back and look at what they predicted in 2003 and see if their predictions held true. They have an example of a plan for reuse of that, that area over there that's different from what we're hearing now. And I just think it's such an important decision that it's worthy of the discussion and to bring all of this together before you make a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. That concludes the list of people that signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the Planning Commission? Pam?
It was emailed, okay.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Pam Chabour, and I live in District One, a block and a half from here. And I wanted to speak about items both in the regular and the study session tonight. For the Bellevue Corridor Plan, I would like you to either disapprove it or continue it to a later date and put in a study session or more than one to fix weaknesses. For the P4 discussion in the, in the study session, reject it entirely, completely, and categorically. It should never have appeared. My ask on the Bellevue Corridor Plan, I went over last week, but let me say, it should not be called a plan. It's a concept or a study. It's just not at the level of a plan for a number of reasons that citizens have mentioned. Clearly define measurable outcomes and objectives and incorporate those into some kind of guidelines that would lead to the design guidelines or standards that were talked about in the plan. The economic basis has to be integrated. We have two, and they both need to be combined and understood and discussed so that we understand what our city opportunities are for the site. That is what you care about, the city system goals, not the developers. Bottom line, and we've all said it. And then fix the plan, which would remove the housing use and make sure it's community business, and add specific protections for the South Platte River and design for redevelopment based on traffic performance. We have major problems with that. We've got a Pell going on for the Santa Fe whole area, and we've got a visioning process. You have no business, I think, neither body has any business, literally business, conducting business, passing this as a plan before those two items come into focus. For the P4, reject it. The city is under no obligation to make these changes, just the opposite, promotion of public health, safety, and general welfare, not the developer. The city does not harm the owners by denying these changes. Enser South has a 13-acre intense parcel F closer to C470. That was the intent of the system. The city would be harmed if these changes are made. Traffic is already bad, and the river would be degraded. Reject these categorically and completely. So let me show you. Parcel F is down here. It's 13 acres. It has much wider parameters, 150-foot height limit and .75 to 1. Clearly, the concept here is that's close to C470, and let's let that be the big commercial development. The mineral-Santa Fe intersection is not built for this and not capable of handling it. Reject this. Do not invite further proposals like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Planning Commission? Come down and give your name and address, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I live in District One, real close to the Columbine Square side. I attended all three of the meetings held by the city regarding Bellevue Corridor. My neighbors are quite concerned that the former Columbine Shopping Center on the corner of Federal and Bellevue, that they are going to build high-density apartments. Apartments are not needed or wanted at this site. This site is not zoned for apartments. It's zoned for retail, which we do need. And I was looking at the proposed information that they, that these people gave out in March. This that I, this that I have circled was not on there in March. So that is brand-new to this June proposal. This property was doing well until the owner kicked everyone out by not renewing their leases of the business owners four years ago. This landlord caused his own slum and blight, therefore does not deserve any urban renewal money. That's why I am very concerned about this paragraph being in this document. Giving multi-billionaires money would mean the city of Littleton would not receive any taxes from whatever retail business could be developed in this site for 20 years. And apartments do not give the city any tax revenue. They actually cost the city money by, in fire and police calls. Urban renewals meant for property owners that cannot financially make it work. I think billionaires can make it work all by themselves. This property owner has not been a good neighbor to Littleton. I am asking that you please take your time in looking at this document before voting on it by having a study session to discuss it amongst yourself, the commission members. I am very concerned that this statement in the document is going to leave things wide open for a developer to receive money from urban renewal that does not deserve it. It is the job of this commission, along with city council, to determine if a development is appropriate and within the rules and codes of the city. And that would include public hearings in which citizens are able to give their thoughts on the matter. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. Next item, we'll go to general business. The only item is PC Resolution 14-2018, resolution recommending city council action on the Bellevue Avenue Corridor Plan. We have a staff presentation, please.
We will be having our consultant, Clarion, that assisted us with the project, to do the presentation this evening. to do the presentation this evening.
You could state your name and address before you begin. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Darcy White with Clarion Associates, 3160 West 32nd Avenue, Denver, Colorado. I'm here this evening with my colleagues Sung Han, also with Clarion Associates, and Matt Prosser with Economic Planning Systems. EPS helped us with the retail analysis that helped inform the study, and so Matt will be available for questions after the presentation if there are specific questions that the commission wishes to ask. So I wanted to step back a little bit and, bear with me one sec here, talk about the plan as a whole. We've had a lot of comments and discussion between the last meeting and this meeting on specific aspects of the plan, but I wanted to provide a little bit more context on how we got to where we are today and how we interpreted the feedback that we have received. The purpose of this plan is really to provide more specific direction for this very important part of the city. It's an area where the city has very little guidance in its current plans. The neighborhood plans were brought up. Those are absolutely part of this discussion, but I think the realization was that we're projects to come forward. The city really has not a whole lot of guidance to really work with applicants to convey what the citizens are looking for and to provide direction. And so that's really the goal of this plan, is to provide more detailed direction for projects that are coming through, for public investments that are made in this area, as well as to inform future rezonings. This is not a regulatory document, as we heard last time, and I will confirm that that's our understanding as well, and that's really the assumption that we've been taking with this process. That's how plans work. We have absolutely looked at all of the other plans and studies that have been done for this area, and you can see in the blue box up there, there are many of them. And so that was really where we spent a lot of time early on, is looking at what information do we have in place now, what other plans are in place to guide decisions in this area. And so that's absolutely been part of this process from the beginning. We've been careful to carry forward and try to integrate those recommendations as part of this process. In terms of the overall timeframe, we started this process last October. We spent several months really looking at the inventory and analysis work in terms of what are the types of changes, the issues, opportunities that we need to be addressing as part of this process. I think one thing I will note is that plans for an area like the Bellevue Corridor that's largely built out are different than plans for a greenfield area. They're going to be nuanced in terms of the types of recommendations that are in there, and there's no formula for that. And so we've tried very specifically to tailor this plan to the needs of the community in terms of what we heard and the types of direction that we were hearing from the city and the community that they wanted to see in the plan. So I'll talk a little bit more about that. We did put together some preliminary recommendations that we took out to the community in early this year, and that was not the plan itself, but some initial ideas. So we wanted to test that with the community before we went into the step of actually drafting the plan. So the comment earlier about things not being in there that are now in there, they've always been part of the discussion, but we had some initial meetings to talk about that before we released the full draft of the plan. We also have had multiple meetings on the draft plan itself. So in terms of opportunities for input, we did have three. Staff led the initial session back in the fall, and that was really more of a hands-on discussion with the community, small groups, some initial brainstorming. And that was a really important part of this process for us, as it really set the stage for the guiding principles that we'll talk about here in a moment. We did larger meetings for the next two rounds. We had a lot of participation, particularly at our February meeting, and that really helped inform where we went from there. So multiple opportunities for input. Each time we did a round of in-person meetings, we also had the online opportunities for folks to weigh in as well, and you've all had a chance to dig into that. So I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, the foundation for this plan really came from three areas. The citizen input that we heard, and we particularly, as we got into the process, were looking at those early meetings because we had so much kind of tangible feedback from the community early on. We knew exactly, those were primarily residents at that meeting, and that was input we could take to kind of build upon for the process. We did extensive analysis of existing conditions in the corridor. That's reflected in the appendix, so that documents what's happening out there, what the issues and opportunities are, and that was something that we vetted with the community at the February meetings. As I mentioned early on, Economic and Planning Systems also did a separate retail analysis. This did build on the work that was done by staff prior. That was provided to us by your economic development team. We had multiple conversations with them about how to structure this analysis so that it provided the big-picture context that we really needed to look at this. This study, yes, it does include Columbine Square, but it really looked at the broader structure of what feeds into the corridor, what the opportunities are, and how does that site, along with a whole lot of other sites, really fit into the future of the corridor. So based on those three components, we came up with some key findings, and this is what we use to test with the community in terms of, here's what we think the issues are that we need to address and what some of those opportunities are that we want to highlight in the plan for the community moving forward. And so you can see a lot of the types of things that we highlight here are directly addressed in the plan. Pedestrian and vehicular safety were big issues, concerns about traffic, you know, walkability, bikeability, trying to revitalize underutilized parts of the corridor, all big themes that we heard, and also protecting established neighborhoods. I think one of the interesting things about this corridor is that you have a lot of the areas that we're talking about in the plan aren't really going to change a whole lot over the next 20 years. So we're dealing with the idea of trying to promote positive change in certain areas of the corridor while also protecting those existing neighborhoods. So we heard that loud and clear, and I'll talk a little bit more later about how we've tried to address that in the plan. The river corridor, huge opportunity. We've heard that loud and clear from the community, and so a lot of our recommendations focus on leveraging the work that's been done for the corridor and not replicating that plan, but trying to build on that work of the South Platte Working Group. So I won't go into detail on these, but just wanted to make that point, that this was really kind of our starting point as we got into the plan recommendations. So the plan is structured into several sections. I'm going to kind of hit the highlights of each. Overarching corridor vision and principles, which has supporting goals and policies. And then we get into more specific recommendations for the opportunity areas, as well as some recommended enhancements. We also have an implementation section. So thinking back to the public feedback that we heard, we came up with five guiding principles to structure the plan around, as well as a vision statement. We've tried very hard to reflect some of the specific comments that came up, and, you know, I think it was noted earlier that there's a lot of diverse perspectives on this area, and we see that in every plan that we work on. So the challenge is always to try to find those common themes in terms of what can we build on to try to move forward with a plan that balances those different perspectives. And so that's really what we've tried to do with these principles. So the first principle focuses on creating more distinct identity for the corridor, and this really gets at the concerns, acknowledgement that, you know, we do have both big-box stores that are pretty similar to others found in different corridors around the city or in the region, as well as some unique neighborhoods. And so how do we try to tie those diverse pieces together? So the recommendations really focus on signage and wayfinding and creating some distinct opportunities where we can. But it also acknowledges that this was not a redesign the entire corridor plan. It's a pragmatic plan that really recognizes the city has limited resources to invest in this area. That was not the mandate of this plan, but how do we build on the other efforts and try to tie these things together over time? So incremental change. So that happens through both targeted city investments, but also private investments. So as new projects come in, what opportunities do we have to convey what we're looking for as a community and ensure those get worked into projects moving forward? Mobility and safety was also a big theme, and that comes out in several parts of the corridor. East-west connectivity through the neighborhoods to the river corridor to downtown were a big focus, and we really spend a lot of time in the plan talking about how specifically those enhancements can be made over time. So that was an emphasis, as well as how to make some changes over time, working with CDOT and other stakeholders to improve the Bellevue Avenue right-of-way as well. So different aspects of mobility and safety. Neighborhood protection, huge part of the plan. I think we recognize that having single-family neighborhoods in the city that have really seen very little infill or redevelopment to this point, that's a unique situation increasingly in this region. And so we've provided recommendations in the plan to work with the neighborhoods, to try to identify those characteristics they want to protect, and to explore some tools to do that moving forward. So we've tried to provide a foundation for that. The other thing we heard from the community early on that they really value about the corridor is a sense of community, and so there are recommendations there in terms of how the city can work with residents to try to reinforce that. As you have new residents coming in, we spoke with a lot of people at our public meeting in February who had just moved to the corridor, who were excited about the potential of both what was there today, but also what changes might be coming. So I think that there's a recognition that that's something you can kind of nurture as you go forward. Revitalization of existing businesses and underutilized properties. So this was something, regardless of, you know, whether we talked to business owners or residents, that we heard loud and clear, I think, a concern that vacant storefronts, you know, underutilized buildings are not a positive thing for the community. And so there was a desire to reinforce those folks who already have businesses in the area, particularly the local businesses. Residents really indicated that that was something they wanted to see carried forward, but also to recognize that the retail dynamic is changing, and this is something Matt can talk about more, but it's a pretty different environment today in 2018 than it was in 2002 for retail. There's a lot of reasons for that, but we've tried to, again, provide a realistic framework in terms of what the recommendations are with respect to retail, recognizing that it's not going to be as it was 20 years ago. That's not the trend that we're seeing in the state or nationwide. And then the last principle focuses on creating more places for people, and this, again, goes back to what we heard from residents in talking with folks. They really got excited about the areas, the ability to walk to different destinations in the corridor where they could spend time with their family and friends, you know, have a beer, get something to eat, play with their kids, all of those things that exist to some extent in the corridor today, but folks said, you know, that would be something that would really make this an even more special place for us going forward. So we focus on the river corridor here, as well as opportunities to create more of those spaces as you have new opportunities coming forward. Columbine Square is one of those, and so we'll talk more about that in the future, or in the moment. But this was a big part of creating kind of a cohesive set of things that would really help improve the corridor over time. So getting into some of the more specific changes, we talk about opportunity areas, which deals with land use specifically, and then we talk about corridor enhancements. So this is really where we get into the physical improvements that deal with connectivity, identity, all of those aspects that I just mentioned. So earlier I noted that, you know, there are a lot of areas in this corridor that are really not going to see a lot of change, and so what we tried to do in the plan is really focus the energy, the recommendations for change, on those areas that were either most in need of it, for example, Columbine Square, or areas that might be subject to change in the future. And the goal in doing that is, again, to provide the city and the community with the tools to get out in front of thinking about what might happen here in the future and really thinking about what you might want to see or not in these different locations. So we've identified a series of opportunity areas, both near-term and long-term, with that in mind. So the first, which we've spent a lot of time talking about so far, is Columbine Square, and this is certainly the largest and most significant opportunity, primarily because the buildings have been torn down, it's currently vacant, and this is a big priority for the community. There are some challenges with this site that we've noted in terms of sewer districts, visibility, access, all of those things we've tried to highlight. But there are a lot of opportunities associated with this that we've tried to highlight in the plan. One of the things that we, going back to the places for people, have really tried to emphasize here is that those neighborhood-serving uses, gathering places, really need to be part of any future plan for this site. We also emphasize that a mix of housing options is important. In no way, shape, or form have we suggested that strictly multifamily housing is what the community wants here. What we've mentioned is that a mix of housing needs to be provided and that, you know, there are some specific parameters for how that housing really addresses the neighborhoods on each side. So you've got some appropriate transitions in terms of density, as well as connections through the site to help knit that together. So a lot of different factors there, but I think people were really excited about this site as well in terms of the opportunity. We did work, we had met with this property owner by phone, as well as the other property owners, for other opportunity areas in the corridor. So it was kind of a, across-the-board, one of many stakeholders that we talked to, and so we conveyed the feedback from the community to them and talked about different options. And, you know, I think what we've tried to do, again, is balance all of those factors into something that we think gives you a foundation for discussion moving forward. It is not a given in any way, shape, or form in terms of a detailed plan. It's some ideas to build from. The urban renewal plan, what we're doing here is simply acknowledging that that is a tool that the city has in place and that that is an option for the city going forward to consider to use. And so, again, none of these things are given. It's an acknowledgement of the variety of considerations for this particular area. So Centennial Square was another area we looked at. Again, we met with the new property owners here, we talked to them about their plans, and they were already making some enhancements, so this one was a pretty straightforward recommendation. There's some longer-term situations in terms of connectivity that we've tried to highlight. Riverside Downs, there's been a fair amount of conversation about this through our various study sessions and meetings, but I think the idea of, you know, people really liking the general direction of this center and wanting to really emphasize the opportunity associated with the river. There's been some investments made along that area and trying to revitalize those parking lots over the long term, look at other recreational uses in the river corridor itself, so a lot of different things that could happen there. And then we also talked about the Arapaho Center and Centennial Plaza Shops, and so this is another area where the community really values the center in its current form. There are some challenges with this site in terms of access, parking, particularly for pedestrians, but we recognize that this is an important part of the neighborhood fabric and needs to be supported in its efforts to kind of improve itself over time as the opportunity arises. We also acknowledge several long-term opportunity areas, and I know there were some questions about why we would include these areas. Two of them are in the city of Inglewood. We did meet with the city of Inglewood early in our stakeholder interview process. The primary reason for that is really thinking about the overall vitality of this corridor, as well as your connections to other parts of the region. And so we really see this not as a near-term thing that the city needs to spend a lot of time on, but thinking about, as you look at your transportation plan over the coming year and your comprehensive plan, thinking about how you relate to other parts of the region is going to be an important part of that. So we see that as an opportunity, something to consider as going forward. So last part I'll mention is the specific corridor enhancements, and this was an area, I think, in particular, I wanted to emphasize that we've really tried to incorporate a lot of detail about what we heard from the community. The map on the right is the online tool that the city provided following our community meeting that allowed people to identify particular locations where they thought we needed sidewalk enhancements, where streetscape enhancements should occur, intersection improvements, you know, you name it. And we've categorized those recommendations by street or roadway within the corridor and provided a fair bit of detail there to give public works and other opportunity, others working in the corridor, some guidance in terms of what the community's priorities are and what their concerns are moving forward. So that's a pretty... So that's a, that's a pretty meaty section of the plan, that I wanted to emphasize. So shifting gears into implementation, you know, this is really a plan that assumes that implementation is going to be incremental. As I mentioned earlier, this is not a start-from-scratch plan, we, you know, start starting tomorrow, and then it's done in a year. This is something that's going to be implemented over a number of years. And so, as the city has, you know, funding available in its capital improvement program, you may make a few streetscape enhancements here or there, sidewalk improvements. As a project comes in, and you review that, you provide some guidance, so you're getting some, some changes along Bellevue over time. So there's a lot of different ways that this plan will be used, and can be used, but I do want to emphasize, it's not meant to be a plan that is implemented all at once. So this is kind of a more step-by-step process. So, we provide guidance in terms of the timeframes, partnerships, I think the other thing to emphasize, I talked about the related plans. The other thing to emphasize is that there are a lot of other people working within this corridor, a lot of other groups, and we were able to meet with those groups, talk about opportunities to build on their work, opportunities for collaboration in terms of funding. So there's a lot of ways that this can be used also, to work with others, and build on those relationships that the city has, to help implement the plan. So this doesn't all fall on the city, it's a way to kind of leverage your efforts collectively within this area. So I wanted to end in terms of, kind of what we've heard, in kind of going through the comments, as we were coming down the home stretch, in terms of the getting ready for the Planning Commission study session we had in May, the City Council work session we had, and I think, you know, yes, there are a diverse array of comments, but I think we have tried to address the key issues, and we feel like we have done that, in terms of the issues that have been raised. East-west connectivity, pedestrian safety, circulation, access, all of those things we heard again and again. So while there are some things like housing, that are less consistent, we've tried to really emphasize those, where we do have some more consistency. And acknowledging that we do have some mixed opinions about housing, and that's probably one of the biggest sticking points. But again, I would emphasize that the plan really promotes a mix of housing, it recognizes that there's already a mix of housing in the corridor today. We're trying to encourage the more intense housing options further to the east, away from the existing neighborhoods, and emphasize the need for mix in those areas where you do have those edge issues that need to be addressed. So in terms of wrapping up, I think I will stop there, and as I said, Matt is available for questions on the retail, I'm happy to answer any detailed questions, but I appreciate the chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, questions of our consultant, or our staff? We can start anywhere, let's start down here.
Thank you, Darcy. Just one question, as, going back to whether it's a regulatory document or not, the Bellevue-Carter Plan doesn't require that the Columbine Square property be residential, right? It's opportunities and issues, as I understand it?
No, it provides policy direction, it provides a foundation for potential design guidelines that could be considered for that site, but nothing about it is regulatory. It's providing a recommendation that a mix of uses is probably the most viable option for that site, based on the retail analysis and the considerations that we've heard, but that's a whole nother process to go through in terms of-
Is there anything in this document that suggests that housing needs to be part of the mix, or could it develop as all-commercial?
So they have the option to come in today and develop as all-commercial. They certainly would have that option going forward, unless the city goes forward with a rezoning for that site, which they have not committed to doing. So, at this point, it's a, it's a policy guide to consider for future rezonings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
I have questions, it's really more of a, just a consistency thing. I'm looking at page 15, if I can do that. Let me get it here. Catch up my computer. Yeah, so page 15 talks about, do streetscape character, and we talk about streetscape character east of Federal Boulevard, maybe improving that, but I'm wondering if that should say east of Platte Canyon, which then would be consistent with map E on page 33, that sort of shows, or suggests that maybe, street enhancements could be between Platte Canyon and, I think it's Federal.
You're talking about west of the park, is that correct?
Yeah, I just, so there's, hold on, I'm going to go to page 33, where this map is. It was just a consistency, I think the map is trying to show that blue line, it shows, it shows from Platte Canyon to Prince, as being an opportunity to improve streetscape enhancements. In the language above, on page 15, it actually says, I believe, from Federal East. So I'm just saying, I think it, I think you need to expand that to go to Lowell. Does that make, it's not making sense, I can see that, here, let's see.
Yeah, I think part of the intent of the federal reference was kind of highlighting where a lot of the non-residential and the more mixed-use character was coming in, but it's a fair point, we could definitely clarify that.
And then just a reminder, page 25, when we're talking about Columbine Square in the west edge, it's Irving, I think there's some language in there about Julian Street, that that was just kind of confusing, but. Okay. That's all I have right now. That's all I have right now.
Okay. John?
Thanks, Darcy. I think the plan is, is well put together, and a great improvement over not having anything at all, which is basically where we started from. And I recall in the past, there was a lot of concern that Planning Commission and city government was not moving forward with a plan for this area, and now we're here, and great. Lot of good things to comment on, and commend you for putting in this plan. The opportunity areas, specifically, that this is not a regulatory plan, do you think it would be inappropriate for each opportunity area to have a brief mention of the existing zoning for that area?
So we actually do have the existing zoning called out in the inventory report, but we could certainly cross-reference that for consistency and clarity, if that's helpful.
Yeah, just so it's not in somewhere else, I was just wondering if you thought that might be appropriate. And then, when there are opportunities discussed, that involve a potential zoning change, to have that briefly mentioned, that this type of, of short-term or long-term opportunity would require a zoning change. And I think that would alleviate a lot of people's concerns over, gee, this is just, you know, we're mentioning something, but, you know, that, sure, we're mentioning it, but we're also being clear on that, you know, these are not a done deal, it's going to require specific actions that may or may not happen.
Sure.
David?
Just a couple of things on the, on the plan itself, just, they're, just minor things. On page two, you have related plans and studies. Was it in the, it doesn't look like it's, it's in any specific order. I don't know if you, if putting in the order of importance, or, or would it be better to put it in the, in the order of, you know, when the report was done? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think right now they're just alphabetical based on them, so yeah, so we could certainly organize them by date, or whatever's preferable.
Okay. Yeah, just to have some reason behind it, I guess. I didn't, I wasn't looking for alphabet, for the alphabet. And then, looking at some of these pictures, like on page 34, 36, 37, you're using Google Maps here, and there's a variety of dates that these pictures were taken, some in 2014, some were in 2017, but I, you know, somebody made the comment about doing groundwork, and I think actually going out and taking pictures today would be, you know, would be, be a step in that direction. I don't know how far, but, you know, rather than just relying on Google Maps, because, I mean, I look at Google Maps today, I looked at Irving Street, somebody had made a comment about parking on Irving Street, and, so I went over and drove it, and there are cars, there, in, in the picture on Google Maps, there's no cars parked on Irving Street, it's from 2013, I don't know that you have a picture of that in here, but when I drove it, there were cars parked on both sides, and I was able to drive down both ways on my side of the road. So, just being able to clearly see stuff like that, as it stands today, would be helpful, I think. And then, just, I just want to clarify what seems like some confusion, and, and we've already stated this several times, I think, in this process today, and at other times as well, that this is called a plan, because that's what, you know, it goes with the citywide plan, corridor plan, neighborhood plans. This isn't, this doesn't include a developer, because they're not involved in this, there's no development, we're not consulting business, I mean, we may have gotten some input, but we're not consulting them, they don't have a seat at the table for this. This is the city's design guidelines, that we can use when plans come forward, this is not a zoning change, this is, it's just, it's a step back from that, it's a 10,000-foot, maybe a 5,000-foot view. Would you say that that's correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thanks, that's it.
Jason?
I have questions more about the retail analysis, so we can, we can wait till other folks have finished the questions on the plan itself.
No, we might, we might as well.
I'm Matt Prosser, with Economic and Planning Systems.
Great, thank you. Like, if you could, just to talk a little bit about the, sort of the changing face of retail, and what are the trends that we're seeing currently in the retail sector, and how those affected any recommendations that came into the report?
Sure, I'll touch on three major ones that we're sort of seeing. I think the first is the one that a lot of us are noticing, is the impact of online retailing on brick-and-mortar retail. So I think in the report, it, online retail has grown 20% annually over the last 10, 15 years, while brick-and-mortar has grown by 2% or 3%. And so it's, it's still only, you know, 7% to 10% of total retail sales, but it's continually growing, and at a rapid rate. So which, that's causing a lot of reaction from retailers to try to compete with that, in either diversifying how they sell products, or, but also how they, they compete in the online realm. So you see a lot of brick-and-mortar retailers, like King Supers and others, actually offering delivery services, online sort of tools, and things like that, to, to be, to mimic sort of the things that the Amazons of the world are doing. And I think what we've seen since the recession of '08 and '09, was really consolidation of retail stores, both in terms of the number of stores, but also the store change that exists. So we're seeing a number going out of business, Sports Authority being sort of a major one here, that you can think of, but you are also seeing Walmarts and Sam's Club even reducing the number of stores they have. And what they're doing is, they're moving, and they're consolidating their, their locations to their prime areas, where perhaps traditionally, the focus was to try to get more embedded into different retail, or more stores into more areas of town, thinking that would provide more competitive advantage, but what they're finding is really being well-located, and serving a larger trade area actually works more efficiently for them. So in terms of the Bellevue Corridor, in that framework, we're fortunate in that the Bellevue Corridor is pretty well-located, it's a good spot, has very strong anchors, and so that's driving retail demand, particularly the two home improvement stores, and then also the King Supers, which unfortunately is in Inglewood, but also drive, it's a major driver of demand at the adjacent centers around it, that are in Littleton. So, that's an advantage. The challenge, though, and especially with the Columbine Square area, is that the ability to create a retail center, especially when that would have to be sort of redevelopment, you're trying to find major anchors, or larger users of space, to drive the feasibility of redevelopment. And so that's a huge site, and would require, you know, at least one or two different large anchors to kind of anchor retail development in that. And those are few and far between, especially in the regional trade area for this area. There's, we've inventoried all the ones that are in the area, are in, active in Colorado, and the majority of them, if not all, are in this trade area already. And so what we're seeing in other places, in other communities, is developers, property owners, finding other things to anchor retail centers. So whether that's housing, maybe that's some entertainment use, maybe that's community assets or amenity, that's going to drive traffic, which will help support the retailers. And so thinking more broadly about what can anchor a retail center, is something that a lot of communities are doing, and especially in areas where they're seeing consolidation. A lot, we've done some work for various communities along US 36th Corridor, and a lot of the conversations we're having with them, is that, the reality is, they can't find anchors to refill space, so they're going to have to try different approaches. And then I think, the third major trend that we're seeing is, sort of the bifurcation of retail, towards sort of the low-cost, convenient-oriented retail, and more experience-oriented retail, or local-oriented retail, and that the brick-and-mortar retailers that are thriving are either sort of in that space, either the Costco, or more sort of that authentic, perhaps Downtown Littleton is a good example of that, something that's more of an experience. And part of that is being driven by the growing presence of food and beverage as a component of retail centers. And so traditionally, or, you know, 15, 20 years ago, we saw restaurants being about 20, 30% of retail centers, now they're half, if not more, because they're, they're authentic local, in many ways, can be a local, sorry, oriented, local business, businesses that can create authenticity and draw people to the center. So yeah, that was sort of a long-winded, but those are the three major ones that we're seeing, that influenced the plan.
Thank you. And then, specific to the sort of Columbine Square recommendations, one thing I noticed in the study is that it estimated 200,000 roughly square feet of retail space would be needed over the next 10 years, and I just wanted to confirm that that's for the whole trade area, not just specific to the Bellevue Corridor.
Correct, yeah. And so you'd have to capture amount of that, and so what you are looking at is competing against other centers that have, may have better or worse locational attributes.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Rob?
You don't have to go yet.
Okay.
So I was reading some interesting research about millennials, and they don't like to shop online, they like to actually purchase, they like to, it's the immediacy factor. Was that something that you're also seeing?
Yeah, and I think it's sort of that, they're more attracted to that more local-oriented or authentic sort of product. We are finding that they're, they are big spenders at places like Target, and Sam's Club, and Walmart. So, when they need their everyday goods, they're looking at low costs, you know, they have a lot of expenses, student debt, student loan debt, housing, as you know, is very expensive, and so, for those every, everyday things, they're going to those sort of cheaper stores, they'll, you know, you're buying your jeans and your shirt from Target, but perhaps you're splurging on, you know, fancy shoes from some local store, or perhaps an online purchase. So, yeah, we are seeing that, but I think their spending patterns are really fitting well into that bifurcation that we're seeing, going towards convenient, low-cost versus that experienced, local, authentic sort of orientation.
Yeah, so you could see-
Yeah, so you could see something happening along here. Again, we're seeing other shopping centers and areas that have lost some business, going to the experiential, going to the food and the beverage, just like you were talking about. And you can start thinking about, you know, millennials will be getting to a point when they're earning to the point where they can buy more expensive stuff. These are the types of things that couldn't be part of Columbine Square.
Yeah, I think so for sure. I think what we heard, and especially in the meetings I attended, that there was a desire for a destination, places people in the neighborhood want to go to. I actually talked to, you know, two or three different, I would say, millennial couple, younger couples that, and there are things where we want a place that's kind of cool to go out there. They mentioned Riverside Downs as having some cool amenities. The other thing they mentioned is that it's hard to get to this area if you're doing anything other than driving your car. And so, that's, a lot of the recommendations within the plan sort of fit with those things that we're hearing. But I, I think retail can definitely be a component of Columbine Square, and it can be something that's really a major amenity for the community. I just think the biggest challenge is retail, redeveloping on that whole site is going to be a challenge, and so it's sort of, that's where the crux of it becomes.
Right, and it can process over time?
Yes.
Just like anything, it can be done quickly, or it can be done slowly? Thank you.
Yep.
Bruce?
I, I think, to add on to some of the comments that have already been made, hopefully without going too deep, but yeah, I think this, there's a lot of good information. I think you guys have done a lot of good work. I think this is a foundational document. I think you described it as well. I mean, my takeaway from the whole thing is it's aspirational, and once council approves it, it will be something that is a guiding document when somebody comes in for a rezon, for a land use decision. Hypothetically, if you wanted to call it something other than a plan for aesthetic reasons, what might you call it? I've got a suggestion. I don't know if it's a good suggestion, but...
I think, my response would be, I mean, we, we have these conversations often, everyone has their own opinions about what a plan looks like, and what it, you know, I mean, what it should be called. So, I think, I mean, you can call it a framework, you can call it a guiding, I mean, it's, it can be any one of those things, but at the end of the day, it's still a plan.
It's, it is what it is.
Yeah, so...
Okay, okay. I want to state, and I think you've already covered it, but I'm going to reiterate it, neither Planning Commission nor City Council has the right to prohibit a property owner, for example, the owner of Columbine Square, from doing what they choose to do with their property in accordance with the existing zoning. So, whatever is allowed, and Steve, maybe you want to chime in here, whatever is allowed with respect to the existing zoning, in terms of use, density, height, setbacks, so forth and so on, they can do it tomorrow if they really want to do it.
Commissioner, that's absolutely correct. The Fifth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution, and the Colorado Constitution, all provide that you may not take a property owner's rights without due process. If they have existing zoning on the property, and they proceed through the city's procedures, get a site plan bearing permit, they have an absolute right to develop their property, and in fact, the city would be engaging in a violation of their civil rights, should the city obstruct that.
Okay, yep, understand. And that's essentially why spot zoning is illegal.
That's one of the reasons, together with the fact that spot zoning is perceived as essentially undermining the whole concept of land use, because you're not looking at compatibility of adjacent properties, you're just picking out one little property and plopping some zoning on it, without regard to the whole.
So, therefore, based on the feedback broadly construed from everybody that participated in this process, which struck me as fair, I mean, we, we had this thing open for months on end, and I don't think there's any, you tell me, there didn't strike me as being any indication that you got a lot of feedback that was necessarily anything but genuine. But, you know, if some people are not in favor of dense housing, I get it, I understand the traffic, I understand all the comments, we, you know, read through a hundred pages of the, the comments, which is why we deferred from last meeting. And at the same point in time, there are people that, that may express a somewhat different opinion. But what we can do with this document, and in fact, what we are doing with this document, our intention is aspirational, this is what broadly construed the city, the citizens would prefer to see more versus less of, which is essentially how you guys approached the whole thing. Not as, we, we don't want any of this, we don't want any of that, there's differences of opinions, as you said, there's, there's transitional areas, so forth and so on. My, it's been a few years, but my recollection of tax increment financing in an urban renewal sense oftentimes had to do with improving property defects, things like curb gutter, bad lighting, so forth and so on. But one of the attributes allowed for the use of a little bit of public money as a negotiating tool to help drive projects in certain directions. So, in, I'm asking, in theory, what could hypothetically happen here, it's not Planning Commission's responsibility, but LIFT would then be able to come in and look at a potential request for something, and put their own stipulations or conditions on what would happen if they thought that was a good idea. At which point in time, the property taxes on the property might increase, which would pay back the tax increment financing, wouldn't preclude us from getting sales tax revenue, so forth and so on. So, it was never about, you know, millions and millions and millions of dollars to a developer, it was about improving a defective parcel in a way to try to get something else that the community would prefer in a negotiated environment. Is that a fair way to look at it?
So, I'm going to ask Matt, actually, to, to talk about that, since he has a lot of experience in that area.
And I think I'd like to weigh in on that, too, Commissioner. In terms of urban renewal and tax increment financing, frequently, another term for that is, that's used as what we call conduit financing, because essentially, the Urban Renewal Authority acts as a conduit to provide financing based on the feasibility of the project. Many, many, many projects are even built in urban renewal plan areas that never seek tax increment financing, because the developer is sufficient, has sufficient resources to do the project without it. And there's no requirement, even if you're in an urban renewal plan area, that you have to use urban renewal financing. Frequently, it is used to sometimes bring about a higher-quality project, because simply the economic dynamics of the area may not allow for that, or frequently it's used because there may be things such as demolition of old buildings, brown fields, other types of things that act as a deterrent to development, and the additional tax increment financing can assist in that process. So, there's a variety of reasons it might be used as a tool, and frankly, it might not be used as a tool at all, because the private property developer has sufficient financial wherewithal through the various investors they have, that they don't require it.
Okay, okay. Do you want to add anything to that, or?
I would just say...
I don't want to make this about urban renewal, because it's, it's a minor item in a broader context.
Yeah, I think the reason that, we, we definitely felt that that had a purpose in the plan, is that it is, it's a strong tool, and it's existing there, and that a lot of the outreach that we had were people suggesting public uses, or public amenities within that site, as potential something they want there, and that tool potentially is a way to try to pay for those, if, which wouldn't otherwise happen with a private development, perhaps. And so, it's just the identification, that it's a tool that could lead to things that the community wanted to see.
So, it's an opportunity, maybe?
Yes.
If it comes about, if LIFT looks at it, you know, if, if there's a negotiation involved with the whole thing. But there's no, nothing in here, because the words are in the document, there's nothing that says, oh, yeah, we're committing a lot of urban renewal money here, it's not the way it works.
No, and you'll have, you know, negotiations to, to determine that, and that is, you know, one, deciding if you want to use it for the project, and two, also the level of contribution you want to give.
In exchange for what?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, great. What else do I want to do here? Well, as a matter of, case in point, I think you guys have gone over this already again, but just to reiterate, I think the, the vision of what's being, the corridor vision, to me, you know, we, we can haggle over nuances and details and so forth and so on, but I think the vision that you guys have set forth, creating a more distinct identity for Bellevue that really lacks much distinction, than, much of a distinct identity in the, in the first place, creating more of that is a good vision to have. So, streetscape, bike pad amenities, these are a lot of things we saw coming out of the community input. And taking a step back, I mean, I think we're all looking at the community input and wanting to do as much of, you know, represent it all to the best of our collective abilities, meaning consultants, staff, planning commission, ultimately council when they see it. It, it, there's no, and I think we may do a few things here to try to beef that up, but ultimately, it's good, there's a lot of it, it's good community feedback, and it's really important, and that's why we're here. So, I respect the fact that people took the time to get, you know, comments to, into the system. The second vision statement is improve mobility and safety, air quotes around improve. It, it, there is some mobility, there is some safety, but improving, it's a worthy vision to have as far as a corridor plan is concerned. Three, protecting and reinvesting in corridor neighborhoods. I assume this means respecting enhancing property values, and so ultimately, whatever we can do to put a document in place that's got guiding principles, that manifests itself in protecting the neighborhoods, so their property values goes up, is, is us doing our Supporting existing businesses and revitalizing underutilized properties is sort of self-explanatory, and more gathering places for people. Am I missing any? I mean, is that, are those fair comments from your perspective, in terms of assessing this at the quote-unquote, you know, twenty-thousand-foot level?
Yeah, no, I think they are.
And the microphone?
Yes, I think they are.
Okay, okay, good. I'll stop there and hand the mic to you.
Thank you very much. I'll save most of my comments until we have, until after we have a motion and a discussion before a vote. Couple items. You mentioned, Bruce, that this is a foundational document, which I really agree with. So, but it's also a little bit more, more than a foundational document for rezoning, but it's also, would help the city initiated infrastructure improvements, it could also help property owners looking for guidance when they're looking to improve their property. So, those are a couple other items to add to the foundational document outcome. Secondly, this is, this is, this is a corridor plan and not a Columbine Square plan, but since everybody has brought it up, I'll, I'll dive into it with just a couple additional comments about, about zoning of this site. This is a very heavy B-two zoning lot with a PD overlay. What that means is two-to-one floor area ratio, no height, no height limit, minimal setbacks, minimal open space requirements. If this site is developed as commercial, you're not going to be looking at a nice little residential-style, one-story retail or commercial building. This will be heavy-duty. I can see that the squawking over, the implementation of a use-by-right by the owner will far exceed the complaining about what could be put in on this site, if it's a mixture of retail, commercial, and residential. Those are all my comments for right now. Any other questions for our consultant or staff? Seeing none. Will entertain a motion?
I have a question on the motion. Let me, I'm going to ask the city, the city attorney here. If we make, and you've heard a few of them already here, in terms of people wanting to tweak, make tweaks, if, I'm euphemistically, tweaks to the, to the document, should we treat those as individual amendments, or should we capture them all at once, and then vote on the whole thing? Is there a preference in terms of procedure?
Commissioners, members of the commission, you, if you had multiple amendments, you would have to do them individually unless they're germane to each other. If there was an amendment to a section that perhaps involved two things, that would generally be germane, and you could include both of those in the amendment. But if you said, well, gee, I want to amend the references and delete all the references to an extension of Prince Avenue, and, oh, by the way, I want to delete the reference to urban renewal, that would be two amendments that are not germane, they'd have to be done separately.
Okay, so let me ask it, let me, I understand what you're saying, but let me ask it this way, then. The comment about cross-referencing the inventory report with regard to the zoning codes, is that amending the document, or is that a recommendation to City Council concerning Bellevue Area Corridor Plan with the following conditions?
Commissioners, I think that's not amending the document, that's actually something that, if the commission desired that, I think staff could simply work with the consultant to do that in the document presented to council. That's just simply really correcting, it'd be like correcting an index. It's just, it's not, it's the typographical editing that staff does every day.
Okay, perfect, okay. All right, I'm going to take a shot at this, unless somebody else.
No, I am.
You're always the one that does this.
Truly wants to, yeah. I'll go for you, Bruce.
Go, Bruce, go. Well, I got it written down.
Okay.
This is our recording secretary for this evening.
I got it written down here, right here.
Take it, go for it if you want to do it. I'm easy.
All right. I move to approve PC Resolution fourteen dash two-zero-one-eight, which forwards a favorable recommendation to City Council concerning the Bellevue Avenue Corridor Plan. I don't have any conditions.
Oh, okay. All right, then I'll...
We could add those as amendments.
You can add those as amendments, or individually as amendments.
All right, then, let me...
It's up to you.
All right, we've got it free-stated.
Well, those who came up with the suggestions, we might ask them if they wish to have it as amendment.
I think the zoning issue, he was saying, you don't have to do that as a condition, that's just something...
Well, that, that would be a condition.
Mr. Chair, you have a motion, but you really don't have a second. My suggestion would be that someone second the motion, you then have discussion, and then you entertain an amendment, if there's any amendment.
I'll second it.
All right. Now, we have a second, now we can have a discussion.
Okay, there we go.
All right, so the first one I had, I think it was Dan's, which was modifying page fifteen streetscape from federal to Lowell. Dan, is that one you want to pursue?
Yeah, I think that's just a consistency with the map on page thirty-three.
So, is that an amendment to the, I guess that would be more or less an amendment?
That's just really, if you just want us to change...
Yes, just to make it, you're saying to make it consistent, right, the verbiage with the map.
So, that's a condition.
That's just editing, that doesn't require an amendment.
Okay.
Because there's not, it's no, it's not context, it's just...
Gotcha, I got it, yeah. So, that's a condition. Cross-referencing the inventory report to the zoning codes, was that yours?
No, but...
Okay, but that's the same thing, that's...
That would be just editing, and we would be prepared to do that.
Yeah, right, that's cleanup. Yours was reordering the other plan, plans on page two by date instead of alphabetical.
All right, yeah, yeah, and updating the pictures.
And updating pictures was the other one, okay. All right, I've got a, I've got a legitimate amendment. I'm going to move to amend the plan, and what I want to suggest, if I can find it, it's principle number four, policy...
Give us a page, please.
Yeah, I'm working on it. I think it's on page eighteen, it's going to be principle four, policy R-three-dot-two housing. And at the end of that paragraph, while ensuring Bellevue Avenue frontage retains a commercial focus, I want to... focus, I want to insert the following paragraph. Integration should be understood to mean projects of limited mixed-use heights such as two to three stories total, with retail on the first floor, and a number of detached single-family residences in the patio home style are preferred so as to support local businesses while minimizing the impact of incremental traffic flows and parking, period. Positive design collaboration with O'Toole's Garden Center is viewed by the community as very desirable, period. You get all that? I got it written down, I've got a copy of it if you want it. Yeah, okay. So, that would, I would amend the document to include that verbiage with respect to housing, to, I'm sorry, principle four, policy R dash 3 dot 2 on page 18. And that would be an addendum to the paragraph that's there. Anybody want to second that?
I'm still looking for, we sec, well, show me where.
That.
Got it, okay.
Second.
Up to you.
It's a.
It's an amendment.
It's a long amendment, could you reread it again?
Yeah, absolutely. At the end of that paragraph, at the, which is the last paragraph on the right on page 18, I would insert the following paragraph. Integration should be understood to mean projects of limited mixed-use heights such as two to three stories total with retail on the first floor, and a number of detached single-family residences in the patio home style are preferred so as to support local businesses while minimizing the impact of incremental traffic flows and parking, period. Positive design collaboration with O'Toole's Garden Center is viewed by the community as very desirable, period.
And this is, this is a statement for the whole corridor?
Just for.
With respect to housing, yeah, in terms of supporting existing businesses and revitalizing underutilized properties is the, it's the, it's the principle having to do with underutilized properties, AKA Columbine Square.
It's not specific to one parcel, it's for the whole corridor.
Technically, yes, but I mean, if you're going to, if Centennial Square doesn't really have a housing option to it and isn't anywhere near O'Toole's, I mean, that won't be probably all that illustrative for them.
Oh, so the O'Toole's is, is integrated into that paragraph, that's not a separate sentence?
Correct, yeah. And it's, it's aimed at Columbine Square.
Okay. You could just say Columbine, for Columbine Square.
Well, I.
It's, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to discuss.
Got you, no, I understand.
Well, if you had an amendment and a second, any other amendments?
Yeah, I would have one more.
Well, you got to vote on those.
We even got to vote on those.
I mean, Mr. Chair, you can only deal with one amendment on the floor at a time, so you have to deal with the first one before the next one.
Thank you. All right, we have a amendment and a second.
Any further discussion?
Discussion.
Thank you. So, I appreciate the, the thought behind the amendment, and as you mentioned, it seems applicable primarily to the Columbine Square area, so it might be more appropriate to include on page 27, which talks about the infill and redevelopment guidelines for Columbine Square, as opposed to having it as a top level for the entire corridor type of direction or suggestion. That's, that's my thought on the proposed language.
That was my thought as well.
That was my thought, too.
What I was, I guess, the thinking was more of a principle that could transcend, I guess theoretically, you, you know, we, we could put it there, I'm not overly, I'm not completely opposed to it, I felt it fit better where I suggested it, but as long as it's in there, I think we're sort of covering our bases kind of thing.
Well, if you, if you look at the corridor, there's plenty of apartments that are three, four stories, and if they burn down, we're going to encourage two-story with retail below.
I don't, depends on the zoning.
Right. Yeah, that's, I guess that's why I was thinking it would look better in a Columbine Square section.
Well, if you guys want to amend the amendment, I guess you could do that.
It's up to you, you made the amendment, and we'd have to get approval from the second.
Now that's been seconded, it's on the floor, so you essentially, if the motion passes, you can amend the motion after it passes, but you can only do one amendment at a time.
So, we have to vote on the amendment?
You need to vote on it?
Then we can change.
Yeah, now you can change it.
Bring up the amendment again and.
You can amend the amendment, but you need to, one at a time.
Okay.
So, if we don't, if we want to include it on page 28, the opportunity area rivers, oh, excuse me, sorry.
It'd be 24, the Columbine Square.
Okay, so we want to put it there, we're going to vote no, is that correct?
Correct. Or you vote no because you don't want it anywhere.
The other thing is, I use the word, the policy talks about encouraging the integration of multifamily housing and mixed use. I was sort of plugging into the word integration in terms of trying to describe what exactly we mean by integration. So, that was kind of why I threw it in under the policy piece. I get that it's oriented towards Columbine, I don't think that's going to be lost on anyone.
I think it's a. Just for staff, staff input, we generally would agree, I think that either place is probably functional, but it does appear to be more of like the, under the policy principle section versus the short-term opportunities and long-term, but just, oh.
Any others, Robin?
I agree with Bruce, I think it fits there. I understand the concerns of the others, but this is also dealing with the business in general, so I think it's applicable to leave it where Bruce has suggested it.
Any other comments?
I'm sorry, could I hear from staff again? I'm not clear on what exactly the suggestion was.
So, I think our interpretation is that it probably would fit better, specific to Columbine Square, because you really are dealing with issues specific to that site, whereas the guiding principles are corridor-wide, so we wouldn't want it to be misinterpreted in the future when a different opportunity comes up that maybe that doesn't necessarily apply to. So, that's our, that's our opinion on that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, no, go for it, yeah, you got to vote.
We will vote on the amendment.
Okay, that's one against, and so the amendment does not pass.
All right, so I'm going to then offer an amendment using, including the same verbiage, what'd you guys want, on 24, page, including, I'll let staff determine where to put it, where it best fits with respect to page 24, probably 24, maybe 28, 27, 28. But you guys will have to work it in, but as long as the context is there, so let's, the same verbiage in the Columbine Square opportunity.
Number one.
Yeah, number one, that's it, page 24, yeah, correct.
That's second.
Second, okay.
Now, we have a new second discussion. Seeing none.
Oh, I, can you, oh, you already have the amendment, you already stated the amendment, okay, never mind.
You want him to reread the whole thing? He will.
I was just thinking of the, the term patio home. It seemed kind of limiting, I like the idea of having it low, like two, two, three-story max.
I referred to it as detached, single-family residences in the patio home style are preferred.
Yeah.
So, ish, I think there's some latitude there in terms of, I don't think we're talking three-story brown stuff.
Yeah, because on page 25, they have this great scene of, of some kind of townhomes that really integrate well, I think, with the residential, and they're not patio homes, but, but yeah, I think it's, you know, it's, it's just a guideline, right?
Yeah, it's a mix. I think what we're trying to get across is limited height.
Sloped roofs.
Yeah, residential, or retail, some retail on the first floor, if you're going to go up two stories, you know, mixed use above, but you can't just be a sea of, you know, two, three-story buildings, it's supposed to have, which I think is what we were hearing from, you know, the, the commentary, quite honestly, it's just putting a little bit of.
So, are you excluding like duplexes? That's, I mean, because I think patio homes is kind of limiting.
That's what I was saying.
I said detached, single-family residences in the patio home style, I mean, I, duplex to me.
Are preferred, right?
Are preferred, doesn't mean they're.
They're, they're not required.
Required, yeah. But I think it's, we're guiding to what we would prefer based on what was in the, the verbiage, in the feedback.
So, we have a new amendment, as stated and seconded. Any other discussion?
Just one clarification, I think in the language that you stated, Bruce, you said to discourage incremental traffic flows in there, and I think the intent was incremental increases in traffic flows, or?
Well, it was support local businesses while minimizing the impact of incremental traffic flows and parking.
Okay, so incremental on its own is a segment, I don't know, that addresses.
Well, from the development. I mean, that's, what I meant by incremental was you're going to put a development and you're going to have incremental flows, kind of thing, yeah.
Okay.
Any, any other discussion? Time to vote.
Ready?
Okay.
Now the plans before you as amended.
Yeah. Amendment number, that's first amendment has passed. I heard that there was another amendment.
Yes, I have a brief amendment that affects page 28.
What page, I'm sorry?
28.
28.
And this is in the recreational opportunities, and there's some wording in there that was perhaps based on some of my previous input that I would like to update, and specifically the last sentence about low water impalement such as inflatable dam, dash, a concept implemented in Bend, Oregon. I'd like to bring that a little closer to home and have that Bend, Oregon removed and replaced with implemented at the Rio Salado Project.
In Tucson?
In Tempe, Arizona.
Our Tempe.
So, it's R.I.O.S.A.L.A.D.O. project in Tempe, Arizona. And that same change would, would happen again on page 47, under strategy PFP dash 5. And again, mention the Rio Salado Project on the Salt River in Tempe, Arizona, rather than.
On the Rio Salado.
Yeah, is that the amendment?
That's the amendment.
Okay, could you state the amendment, we were fumbling around looking for this section?
On page 28, last bullet, remove Bend dash Oregon and replace it with Rio Salado Project on the Salt River in Tempe, Arizona. And likewise, on page 47, the specific wording. I'm still going, 47, under strategy PFP 5. It's same, same change, remove Bend, Oregon, and replace that with Rio Salado Project on Salt River in Tempe, Arizona.
That's it?
That's it.
Please, did we have a second, or go if not, then I will second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. It's vote. And it came up automatically. We have seven in favor.
Dave, aren't you going to vote no? I haven't liked that project.
You got to see if it works every once in a while.
John was supposed to vote no on his own amendment. Stay consistent here, Bruce.
I got one.
I hear that there, one per customer, but we'll violate that.
No, please, if anybody else.
No.
I'll wait.
Any other, any other amendments before Bruce goes up? Go away.
Okay. In deference to, I don't know that I feel as, that strongly about this, but in deference to some of the enthusiasm communicated by public comment, I'll offer an amendment for your consideration with respect to renaming the Bellevue Avenue Corridor Plan as the Bellevue Avenue Corridor Placemaking Document, period. The logic for this is as follows, according to the Downtown Revitalization in Small and Midsize Cities document prepared by the American Planning Association, they describe placemaking as the art of transforming public space into quality places. Placemaking is not just about improving aesthetics, it's also concerned with improving the function of an area such as making it more pedestrian-friendly or enhancing traffic flow and parking. Placemaking is recognized not just for its intrinsic value, but also because it can be a tool for economic development. For example, good placemaking helps create strong bond between people and places in which they live, work, shop, and play, and it breeds a sense of pride and belonging. I think all of that's consistent with what this document is intending to accomplish. Like I said, I don't know that, we're not just splitting hairs, but out of respect, I'll throw that out there, if we're so inclined, we can change the name.
Could you read the first sentence again of that APA document?
Says placemaking is the art of transforming public space into quality places. Placemaking is not just about improving aesthetics, it's also concerned with improving the function of an area such as making it more pedestrian-friendly or enhancing traffic flow and parking.
So, your proposal is to name it what?
Bellevue Avenue Corridor Placemaking Document.
We have an amendment, or motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, I would just say that the first sentence that you read says public spaces, that's all.
Well, some of it is. Yeah, no, I mean, there's elements of all of it.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of public space in this area.
But I mean, even, even the retail areas are public, they're not public property, they're public spaces, which enhance quality of life.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Moving right along. Time to vote.
With two against, the motion fails.
Motion fails. Any other amendments?
I, I know I can't make an amendment, but I'd suggest this for a sponsor, since there was some very enthusiastic, passionate input from the public on this, I would suggest that there be a section of the appendix added that incorporates the public record on this. I don't see it in the table of contents under appendix, but I think either the summary or the detail of, of it could become part of the appendix, so it's easily resourced as part of the guidance for, especially when developers come forward with plans.
We did that with the mineral station, we very much wanted to save the public comment for the station, but that could be an administrative add-on, like some of the others, okay?
We can deal with that administratively.
Okay, or unless somebody wants to make a motion.
You have a motion on the floor as amended with the two approved amendments.
I know, just I have to ask. Okay, seeing none. We're back to the main motion, we have a motion, we have a second.
Did that, was that a motion? Did that, was that a motion?
No, it wasn't. He cannot make a motion.
He can't make a motion. How do we normally do that, though? I mean, what's the process for keeping the public comments and...
We're gonna, we'll add it. It was not intended to not be there, it's part of it, so we were gonna have it anyway, so we're just gonna... You guys gave us a list of more administrative tasks to make sure we've done, and so we've added it to that. You don't need an amendment.
No, it can just be done as an appendix.
Okay. Back to the main motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments, unless you want to start at one end and go to the other.
You asked first, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you guys for all the work that you put into this. I see a lot of pluses. It's very aesthetically pleasing. You know, you have lots of the maps and charts. You do good attention to connectivity in all modalities, the gathering places, revitalizing and supporting businesses, respecting and protecting the existing neighborhoods. Your emphasis on safety and the streetscape enhancements are very wonderful to see in this document. I have some concerns that are... It's more of a mixed bag. It's, you know, you talk about principle one, creating a more distinct identity, which is a good goal, but there's really no description of how this is going to turn out as an outcome. I mean, talking about the trees and the sidewalks, public art, gateways, good start, but it's just a little too nebulous, and I think it falls a little short of actually fulfilling that principle. Another mixed area I find is the river, principle five. It's mentioned a couple of places. Again, good ideas, you know, engaging the community in the river, recreation, restaurants, access, gathering places, on one hand. On the other hand, we have about keeping it natural, keeping down the noise, and trail development. These are conflicting things, and not that either is good or bad. I'd like to have seen more about how that would be balanced, how are we balancing the urbanizing of the river with keeping it natural, leaving it this way, it's kind of a hit or miss, someone wants to urbanize it, someone wants to keep it natural, maybe a more distinctive plan. Again, I like the ideas you have on the river, but it just seems like it needs more discussion to balance that out and how it would look, what would the outcome be of those two ideas since they are so different from each other. I still feel like the vision statement sounds like a warmed-over planning commissioner's template. I know you've worked hard on that and you've added a lot of stuff to it, but it just still feels that way to me. It doesn't sound like the traffic concerns of the neighborhood is adequately recognized. You know, when you look under ideas, it's existing neighbors are sensitive to potential increases in traffic volume. That's like an understatement. From hearing the community talk about traffic, they were concerned and upset about it right now, let alone the potential of the future. They are already concerned, and I don't think this plan adequately states those concerns of the community. You're probably noticing, these are things I've already said in the planning study, in our study sessions. This is nothing new, but I still feel like they haven't been properly addressed. My biggest concern is Opportunity Area One, Columbine Square, the shopping center. Again, this is the vision that we're looking for this. It's not necessarily, as you were saying about the present zoning and stuff, but when I read this, it actually sounds to me like it's contradicting principle four, which says we are to revitalize and support businesses, not necessarily getting rid of some of it. And when I look at the pictures for Columbine Square, it looks much more housing than business. I mean, yes, of course, as Bruce stated, it's B-two, but this is our vision. Do we want our vision for this to be looking more housing than business? And again, I think that contradicts principle four. I think we have to really keep in mind the city's financial sustainability is essential, and when we start removing commercial, even if it's in this pictorial way, adding the residential instead of it, it doesn't do that. We've seen the same thing happen in South Park, where there was the temptation to go residential, and of course, now, we just learned in our previous session how much money that brings in in user taxes. That's not retail, that's user taxes, and that potential is here, obviously not for the same amount, this is a smaller area. But I just think it's best not to fall into the trap of trying to make something residential where businesses could still thrive, you know, listening to what the gentleman said on economics. We know that there are other things that can be done that could satisfy the community, whether it's the restaurants, it's the entertainment, and the different things that were discussed, which I really appreciate your thoughts on. Thank you. This also kind of ignores, again, the traffic, where the community is already talking about their concern about the traffic and intensity, and again, looking at the pictures that are provided for this area, it's too intense. The traffic seems to have been pushed to the side, not nearly as addressed, though I appreciate what you said, Bruce, because you did put the traffic in there with that one comment, and I did like that. It was very helpful. I think also that the changes to this Opportunity Area One, Columbine Square contradicts principle three. Principle three is to protect or reinvest in corridor neighborhoods, particular NR one-dash-one, it's on page seventeen if you want to look at it. It says redevelopment is to be compatible with zigzagged character, density, scale, setbacks, building heights, and massing. It also says to protect and enhance the character. So the character here was never truly described. In the appendix, it talks a little bit about it, but saying something is residential or commercial, it's so much more than the character, and I don't think it's possible to protect and enhance the character until it is more fully defined. A general attempt was made at this, but it's not adequate. I'm going to use Littleton Village as an example. So in the neighborhood plan for there, it also said that you were supposed to prefer, excuse me, preserve or enhance the character of the existing residential uses, and if you're familiar with that area, it doesn't. So I am very concerned that this does not actually protect the neighborhood to do as it proposes to do. I know that's your intent and purposes, but I don't think it's strong enough. Again, I'm just repeating things that I said in the study session that I don't feel like have been adequately addressed. The outcomes of this are missing. I like the citizen's suggestion about having some kind of diagram to show. What would this corridor look like if all these things were implemented? You know, whether you do it in a diagram, whether you do it on the computer to show some kind of 3D vision. There are lots of wonderful things that are put in here, and there's lots of things that kind of contradict each other. How is it going to look? And I'm concerned that without seeing measurable outcomes to really see, are we hitting what we're trying to do, that we could be creating something with unintended consequences. So I truly do appreciate all the work that was done with staff and with you guys and the comments that were made here, but I am still not comfortable supporting it for these reasons. So, thank you.
Next, about down here.
Go ahead, I'll chime in. I don't have anything at the moment.
He's speaking, your microphone.
I'll wait till the other commissioners have a chance to speak.
The coveted last plate spot there.
What's that?
He's taking the coveted last spot.
No, that's my spot, sorry. Denied. Anybody down here? Nothing?
Yeah, I have some comments. So I also appreciate all the work that you've done on this. It goes into, you know, for what this document is, it goes into really great detail about, you know, kind of how we want this, this plan implemented and what we would like to see, but it doesn't go as far as creating what developers are going to be doing, which is making a plan for each of their own sites, and we get a chance to say, you know, that fits or that doesn't. And that, I think, is our role, and so I think it's, I think it fits perfectly. There has been some discussion about it being compatible or incompatible with other plans that are already out there, and, you know, this is in, this is kind of in between the Goddard and Centennial neighborhoods, and I was kind of looking at some of the goals and policies. The Centennial neighborhood, which is more in the retail section, which also has plenty of residential, you know, apartments in it. The goal number one is preserve existing character of the neighborhood, exemplified by retail and commercial uses. It also goes on to say encourage improved street system that will increase ease of access, promote viability of the area, et cetera. But if you look at kind of the far west, western side of the Centennial neighborhood, it fits into the eastern side of the Goddard neighborhood on Irving Street, which is a narrow street with the backside of some commercial. It's also got some apartments on the east side within the Centennial neighborhood. It's got a Rappahoe County warehouse, the backside of O'Toole's, and the Goddard neighborhood states in policy your goal number two. Encourage new commercial uses to concentrate and establish presently zoned business districts to arrest development of strip commercial, which encroach into residential areas. And then goal number three goes on to talk about instituting review procedures with neighboring jurisdictions, which I would also throw Centennial into that, since it's at the, it's a neighboring neighborhood. And so I like the way, specific to the Columbine Square parcel, that it talks about having residential on the west side, and I think you guys, just from the pictures and descriptions, and then the amendment, we have, you know, low height residential kind of concentrated to the west side and maybe even the north side of that on Bellevue, because there's residential on the north and east side of the Centennial neighborhood and the, oh, wait a minute, the north and west side of the Centennial neighborhood bordering Goddard. And then concentrating retail on the east side, more along Federal and near US Bank at the northeast corner there, and that makes a lot of sense to me to kind of buffer the residential and the retail uses. It looks really nice in the pictures that you guys have there. I think those are definitely appropriate. Somebody also talked about the traffic on Irving Street. You know, it's been shown in recent years that narrower streets, including parking, where people have to kind of navigate that narrow lane, that slows down traffic. I initially had thought, well, maybe you could widen Irving Street, you know, near Columbine Square, because you've kind of got an open slate there, but I think a narrower street with residential, slow traffic, I think that fits in really well. I like the, just going back to the plan itself, I like integrating the, you know, I heard a lot of comments in the, in the citizen, the citizen comments about, you know, pedestrian safety and connectivity, and you guys really include in that a lot on, you know, improving that access within the corridor. Some places are better than others. I would say Bellevue is terrible as far as multimodal transportation, and trying to get, trying to bike through there on an east-to-west, along Bellevue or even along Bowles, it's just almost impossible to get from, say, Grant Ranch or Raccoon Creek over to Santa Fe. You just, you just can't do it on a bike. You have to, I mean, interrupt pedestrian traffic on the sidewalks to do it. But, yeah, I think this is a great, great document, and, you know, they're, you know, as with all of our plans, you know, they're pretty dense, complex. There's going to be some inconsistencies here and there, but, you know, we kind of deal with them on a case-by-case basis, and I'm okay with that. You know, if we hold out for perfection or hold out for every next plan that's coming out in a year or two, we'll never get this going, and we've been working on these things for years and years, since before I was on this, on this commission, so, or board, as it were, when that was the case.
The old board.
So I think it's a great document, and I definitely will support it.
Anyone else?
Just wanted to thank the consultants for starting with a retail survey of the area, because retail is such an important part of this corridor, and one of the things that I was wondering at the beginning of this process was what will that reveal, and will it reveal something that makes some people unhappy? And I think from the public testimony, it's clear that it may have done that. What that study said to me is that we have about 1.56 million square feet of retail in the trade area, and we have about 1.55 million in demand for retail in the trade area today, and there's a limited amount of retail that's going to be attracted to this trade area. So mixing the uses, including residential components, is something that's absolutely essential for success of those retail components. And I also appreciated the consultant's comments about the retail really should have anchors that are not the traditional anchors, that it's something like a community amenity, whether that's a park, a pool, or a library. In fact, the streets at South Glen and Centennial survived the recession, thanks in part to its mix of retail, residential, and having a library there that actually attracted people during the recession to a shopping center. And so I really appreciate sort of the database foundation that the consultants helped with. I do appreciate all of the comments and concerns about high density and the intensity, and I think that the condition that we added to that section of Opportunity Area One does help address those concerns.
You done?
Also, in defense of Littleton Village, they have a beautiful Starbucks building.
We're not in the business of Soviet-style central planning. We do not create outcomes. What we're doing here in collaboration with the consultants, staff, citizens, is putting forth the community's aspirations broadly for an area. It is desirable and good to have different interpretations of possible outcomes that can be actionable when it's appropriate to do so based on the economics. That's how things need to get done, and we're not smart enough to figure out what all those are or should be, and we really need people who are adept at doing those kind of things to come in and get creative in ways that we, there's, no way we possibly could. So I think it's a good document. I really think it is. And plus, more to the point, for years, planning commissions were sort of hamstrung by doing projects that would take, you know, would be on spin cycle forever and then never get finished, and this one's basically getting done in the better part of nine months, which is a substantial piece of work that's actually functional and useful, and, you know, we cross a goal line and we can move on. So, I mean, there's something to be said for that. It's, it beats, you know, going over the same ground over and over and over kind of thing, so I'll support it.
Great, you're up.
Okay, sure, I'm ready now. So, yeah, my inclination would be to support approval of this document. First of all, it's, I hear two different sort of conversations going on. One is a sort of community-driven plan or vision for a corridor that's very challenging, and again, kudos to the consulting team to pull together, you know, a corridor that's partially in Englewood, partially in Littleton. It's got odd mix of uses, and it transitions from one end to the other. And to the extent that it incorporates the comments from the neighborhoods, the communities that are going to be most impacted to it, I've heard a lot of concern about that. I can't really speak to that. As a newer commissioner, I wasn't involved in that process. I did read through the comments, and there's, there are some good ones and some varied ones, and that's why I suggested that they be part of the record. On the other hand, I hear, you know, a lot of, a lot of concern about how this might enable... On the other hand, I hear, you know, a lot of concern about how this might enable a particular development to be something other than what the community envisions it to be. I just don't see that in this plan. It's a corridor plan primarily. It's identifying issues and opportunities, not land uses. It's not a zoning document. And I think we can't not do something about the corridor. The idea of having a corridor plan is to get out ahead of development so that we can, as a community, steer more positive outcomes than if just left to development and the market to achieve. And that's happened, we've seen that happen recently on several projects in Littleton where the community couldn't come to agreement, so the developer just built it as of right and didn't seem like anybody was real happy with that outcome. So for that reason, I think we get ahead of it. It's a high-level document. It allows room for more public engagement, more public process surrounding individual developments within that corridor, including Columbine Square. So that's my, if I could vote, I would support it.
I'm in a similar situation in that I did not participate initially in this process, but having read everything and looked at all the documents, it does seem that the biggest holdup sounds like it's the name, plan. And we talked extensively about what that means and doesn't mean and all that. But fundamentally, it is a community vision. And, you know, if we have to throw away that name, plan, that's good and fine, call it what you want. But the document itself did a really good job, and the consultants, of identifying some of those fundamental issues that we can focus on and look at, which primarily what I saw first and foremost was the traffic issues, the corridor, safety issues in the Bellevue corridor itself. And so those are some of the things that we, as a community, can begin to influence and change, where some of the individual properties and developers of property rights are things that we have a certain amount of input on and maybe some control. But we talked extensively about developers, owners have property rights, and we can influence those to some degree, but we can't to some degree. So from that basic standard of, it does identify a lot of the issues that the community has, did a good job of laying out where we can make a difference, I think, as a government, a city, as citizens, which are some of the safety, traffic, you know, access issues. It's a good place to start. So really, my observation, bottom line, is that that word "plan," I think, just really kind of tripped up this process a lot more than maybe it should have been, could have been. And whether you want to change that or not, we might want to move on from there at this point. I would say, I would support this document.
Thank you. I'll start by acknowledging that the Bellevue Corridor is already a vibrant corridor. The list of businesses would fill an entire page, which it did in my book when I did a foot analysis. Can the corridor be tweaked and improved? Of course it can. My main point is this plan is not a panacea for the corridor. It's only a piece, one small piece of the future development improvement process. Other players in this process include property owners with existing property rights, business owners, neighbors and neighborhoods. CDOT, who owns quite a bit of Bellevue in the corridor. Lyft, the urban renewal Lyft. In a city with limited resources, all these entities must work together in concert to improve the corridor. This is a good corridor plan. I've seen a lot of them in my years on the Planning Commission. It's measured, it has a doable action, has doable action items, and is not a pie-in-the-sky wish list with absolutely no chance for implementation. I really like the, somebody else mentioned, I really like the economic analysis. I thought it was spot-on. It does not sugarcoat the challenges facing any commercial corridor in our city or other communities. Does the corridor study respect the river? Yes. Does it respect the neighborhoods? Yes, it does, in my opinion. Does it respect property rights? It does. Does the plan create strategies to help existing and new businesses? Yes. Does it talk at length about improving vehicular and pedestrian circulation? Yes. Also, does it talk at length of improving community gathering places? Yes. Lastly, for the longest time in the past, the Littleton Planning Commission was a reactive commission. We were not gaining any traction passing any corridor plans. Therefore, when a new project came up for rezoning or a plan development, we were reacting. We didn't have a document to go by other than an antique comprehensive plan, basically organized before Reagan. We are now a planning commission again. This plan will help us in the future to help guide all the players that'll be involved in this corridor. Obviously, this plan has my support. Any other comments?
Just one last comment. So I did participate in the public meetings before I was a commissioner, so I was participating as a citizen. I travel the Bellevue Corridor every day for work and was excited to hear about the plan and excited to participate and actually, you know, had comments, I was commenting about improving the stretch of street between Lowell and Federal, and by God, it showed up. So I felt pretty good about it. I felt like I was being listened to. And so I appreciate the plan, and I'm excited to hopefully see things be implemented.
Anyone else? We are voting. Six-one vote in favor of forwarding a recommendation to City Council for approval.
Yes, on the main motion, as amended.
As amended, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now take a 10-minute break and reconvene in the community room to go over the P to the fourth power discussion. Study session here. The topic is ID number 18-217, preliminary project plan process, or as I call it, P4, for Parkland, located on 33-acre, on the 33-acre property at the southwest corner of Mineral Avenue and South Santa Fe Drive, Littleton, Colorado. Before we start, I'm gonna, this is a complicated little issue. I'm gonna, pardon me, but I'm gonna do a little reading here and take you, take you, the audience, those watching at home, through the process, what's going to happen next. So bear with me a minute. This is the preliminary project plan process, or P4, was a process begun by the city within the last six months. It was initiated to allow the developer to check on the viability of a proposal without spending considerable time and money on consultants preparing a proposal that may not fly, may or may not fly. It also allows the planning staff, Planning Commission and Council to encourage the applicant in preparation of a more appropriate application. This project is called Parkland. The property is located at the southwest corner of Santa Fe and Mineral. It's also known as the Enzer property. It includes an orderly 33 acres of the entire Enzer 77-acre property. The property is currently zoned as a planned development approved back in 1985. It allows for a variety of commercial and residential uses, sets out minimum setbacks, height limits, density, which means floor area ratio, parking requirements, and open space minimums. The developer has a right to develop their property with their existing zoning, development agreement, and vested rights if they so desire. Developer wishes to amend or change their plan, development agreement, however, they must go through an amendment process that opens up the changes to city and citizen scrutiny, including posting of the site and a formal public hearing. Specifically for the P4 process... Specifically for the P4 process, this is strictly a voluntary process. A developer may take with the planning commission and if desired, the city council, to get an initial read on the viability of the proposed project. The P4 process is not a formal rezoning hearing, or planned development hearing, or even a zoning overlay hearing. This is not a quasi judicial hearing. It allows the planning commission to give nonbinding and informal input and feedback to a developer on a development concept. The applicant may take this feedback and at their discretion, change their concept, proceed with the application as is, or scrap the proposal altogether. What's gonna happen next this evening? If the developer wishes to proceed, a formal application for a zoning change would be made to the city. The planning staff evaluates the application, may ask for additional information, and require corrections to the application. Then public notice will be given of the formal hearing date. Information on public hearings are always available on the city's website. Planning commission would then hold a formal public hearing with evidence taken from staff, the applicant, and the public. PC will then take an up or down vote on matters of rezoning or changes in the planned development. The planning commission is advisory to city council. Council makes the final decision on approval or disapproval. What will happen tonight? The planning staff will present a general overview of the proposal. Commissioners, you're encouraged to chime in if you have any questions along the way. The applicant is welcome to sit in on the P4 study session, but does not present their concept. After the staff has completed their overview, presentation, planning commissioners will have the opportunity to voice their opinions, as well as ask staff for additional clarification. Finally, there will be no formal vote taken by the PC on the concept. So, that's the general overview. Jocelyn, do you wanna pick over?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would. So as you know, this is our third P4 application in front of you, and so we're refining a little bit, and so we're actually gonna be starting adding some presentations. So I have a presentation going on here, a leave presentation, or PowerPoint, rather. So, as you said, it's the P4 for Evergreen DevCo project called Parkland Concept. And quickly, probably this is somewhat what Mark just mentioned also, but yes, P4, as you know, it's an opportunity for planning commission to provide informal and nonbinding input regarding the concept. Staff is presenting it, applicant may be in the audience, but does not present background. So first, what we require applicants to do is actually come and have a pre-application meeting with staff, so we can better understand what the concept is and what process you would have to go through. So that happened with Evergreen on May 14th. And just a quick note, there is an existing planned development called South Santa Fe Park Plan Development. It's already approved to allow for development of the site. And based on Evergreen's concept that was talked about on May 14th, if it does move forward, it would need to require an amendment to this existing South Santa Fe Park Plan Development. And then again, to reiterate what Mark just said, pre-application meeting happens first. P4 is an option if it's either a new plan development or an amendment to an existing plan development. And then the next thing that is required before formal submittal is a neighborhood outreach meeting, or a meeting. Then, after those steps have happened, then someone may submit a formal application. Staff reviews that, it goes to various review agencies. Typically, there's around three rounds of review, or four, depending. And then from there, then the public meeting before planning commission would be scheduled, would be held, and you would make a recommendation. And first reading, city council to schedule the public hearing, and then city council would hold the public hearing for the final decision making. So now, jumping into what their concept is. As we said, it's for a concept called Parkland, and the property is located on the 33 acres at the southwest corner of Mineral and Santa Fe. And it's within the South Santa Fe Park Plan Development that was approved in 1985. And as stated in Evergreen's narrative, they are proposing an amendment of the property. The purpose of the proposed amendment will be to establish new development standards for future mixed-use development. Land uses will include office, general, commercial, retail, restaurant, food service, and various types of residential in a cohesive manner that is complementary to the surrounding land use patterns. And so this up here on your screen is generally how they're intending to show the different categories and how they're breaking up the proposed land area. It will be, South Platte Parkway will be extended through the site from West Mineral Avenue to adjoining undeveloped property. So the other piece of this... Shoot, I don't have it, but anyway, I'll get to it, it's further on here. But you know, the entire South Santa Fe PD is 110 acres today. So this, we're just talking, they own the northern 33 acres, and so that's what, this is showing you, just that property. But as far as the PD, the existing PD, it extends 77 acres down below it. So yes, so they're, the, what they're doing is dividing through the middle is the South Platte Parkway. And then the commercial office, restaurant, food service will be permitted on all portions of the property. All portions of residential use are intended for those portions of the property lying to the west, or excuse me, to the west of the gray South Platte Parkway. These use to be organized in an urban manner around a corner, just a corridor, a few shit, sort of in the middle. And approximately 3 acres of the site will be dedicated to public streets. 17 acres are anticipated to be used for residential purpose and an overall density of 50,000 units per acre. And the remaining 13 acres are expected to be used for nonresidential purpose at a core area ratio not to exceed 0.4 to 1. And open space is estimated at approximately 20% of the site. So, we're just gonna briefly go through some of the pictures and some of the information that was presented by the applicant on this concept. So as you know, there was a design booklet that was part of it, and I will note also that this is all online. For purposes of tonight's meeting, we printed only some of this material, because we weren't sure exactly community-public-wise, but I can pass this around if you guys wanna see that. But this was all part of your packet, and it is online. But they provided a little bit more detail about the three planned areas that they're calling, one Harvest and Vineyard for more of the commercial on the east side of the Parkway. And then Homestead was primarily the residential area on the west side of the Parkway. So here quickly is just, they were mentioning here about the architectural needs, call for a utilitarian approach to building and reforms arising from basic needs where every element has a purpose. As you know, the project would also be subject to, or any future project would be subject to, we have the design objectives for this area of the city, so we would have to review against that document as well. Then they went into, talking about using various landscaping elements as part of the concept. And then really talking about high-quality landscaping, urban design, to unify apartment with various uses and the people that would be coming to the area both as visitors as well as residents. And then also in the layout was a diagram showing you the connections to the trails, and that being an important piece of this overall project. So this picture kinda shows you the connections above and beyond, you know, outside of the property itself, and connecting to the other roadways, as well as to the original trails. This was more trying to give you a little, or excuse me, diagram around parking, and the intention to create more of a Parkway throughout here, not, you know, a big four-lane road, if you will. So that's what this is showing you. A little bit more showing some landscaping now around that central plaza area that's part of the concept. This is a little bit more detail about that. And, I don't know if I need to go over all of that, and you guys, if you have any questions, I can... And then this is more trying to give you an idea of the model of the passing and what it would look like. Oh, here's the existing PD. So this is what I was showing you, like the top part is the 33 acres, and then here's the remaining 77 acres. And this is to show you what, staff, what we tried to do is take the 85 PD and then put an overlay to see exactly what had transpired since that timeframe. So the orange is to show you that a piece of property, we can see the entire outline of the whole thing. We can see where Mineral comes through, and there were, in the existing PD, it was zoned into parcels. And so parcel A and K, and well, is Mineral. Those were part of this PD at one time, but they, since then, have been rezoned off into other pieces, and now have the light rail station, as well as the 711, and Mineral itself, the road went through. So, this is trying to show you those parcel planning areas in relation to the property. So, the property itself is, it comes as all of plan area B, all of plan area D, all of plan area E, and a portion of C, and a portion of G. That's what that's showing you. This is the 85, this is, actually is our copy of it, and so these, whoops. So staff, what we did is we actually went through this document and retyped it, so that you could read it, because it was really challenging. So that now we have that, and that was included in your packet, the retyped version. But this is what was retyped. And then this is a zoning table that was provided by the applicant, and then staff did enhance it and add to it. And the idea was to try to give you a summary of what's existing, and then what the proposed amendment was to bring forward. And I will note, it's all been fixed, but originally in your packet, somehow the bottom line about the residential had gotten shifted, because currently, in the PD, residential multifamily is allowed in B, plan area B and plan area D. It was incorrect earlier, so that has been corrected. So that is allowed currently where residential you can do today. And then, like I said, this just kinda goes through.
Excuse me, what's allowed, what's allowed in G?
G?
Commercial and residential?
No, no, G actually, G was not shown.
Right, it's not in the table?
Correct. So the uses for G would be the same uses that are allowed for C and E.
C and E, so that is residential and commercial?
So I made a mistake. So somehow the bottom line got shifted. So the residential is not allowed in C and E, it is only allowed in B and D.
Explain it, okay, what's allowed in parcel C?
C does not allow residential.
C does not?
The only, the bottom line in this zoning table, in, on that first page, just the first page, the zoning table, right here. See, this has, this is residential, but it, this is what they're proposing for the new concept. Today, under the existing planned development, you, residential multifamily is allowed in plan area B and plan area D.
That's not what it says.
The what?
Did you say there was a mistake?
There was a mistake. What you had in your packet until this afternoon, because it got shifted somehow, it used to say that residential was allowed in C and E, and that was incorrect. It's allowed in B and D.
B and D.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that help?
That's much the change from what I was looking at. Okay.
So going back to here, I'll show it to you. So what that, what it is showing you on this map, so in B, which is plan area, you see that on this side right here? E is here, right? So it's not allowed in E, which is the main piece here, and it's not allowed in C. Does that help? So that's the zoning table. We can go through it if you want, but really, it's probably easier for you to ask me questions, and we can go that way. In the packet, also then listed out all the individual uses. So, I don't have that in the presentation, but we can talk about that as well, the exception of the residential. And then floor area ratio, just to remind you of how you calculate that. And with that, I can take comments or questions.
This is freewheeling, so fire away.
Input for the concept.
Could you talk about the plans either South Suburban or the city has for the South Platte River Open Space to the west of this site?
Can I talk about what they are?
Yeah, do we have a plan for that, or is it just meant to remain as open space with no particular developments or improvements?
Yeah, so there's a, for the South Platte Park, we do have a management plan, if that's what you're asking. So that would be something that, you know, we would make sure that any application, we would both be communicating and meeting with South Suburban Parks and Rec. We do send all of our development applications, if there are any connection along the Greenway or any open space in Littleton. We do always send it to South Suburban Parks and Rec for them to do plan review and comment on the concept. But we have a management plan. We also have the, as part of the South Platte Working Group, you know, there's those, that vision document, so that also would be part of, here. In addition to when we adopted the Mineral Framework, you know, that had some high-level input, and so we look at that document.
I mean, those parcels are all zoned open space, and to perpetuity, they can only be taken out of open space with a vote of the public. So I mean, there's no development, if that's what you're asking.
I was more wondering if there's a plan to develop trails or open space amenities?
Yeah, yeah, the master plan, South Suburban and South Platte Working Group has a master plan as well.
Right, yes, that's a...
At least to see if there's something for that site.
I think it is what it is at this point.
Correct.
So, how it's currently parceled out, looking at the floor plan or the site plan that has the vineyard, harvest, homestead, the purple zone that's to the west, basically what, currently says there's no residential allowed there, right? It's that parcel E. Just trying to understand that, yeah, so, okay. And the application said that 100 feet height limit, but it looks like, it looks like it's a four-story max.
So, the pictures, remember, are like some concepts of that. Application itself does say that the concept would be an overall maximum height of 100. That's correct. So they were showing both, but the, I believe what it's showing here is that the maximum height of what they'd be potentially looking at would be 100 feet.
What if it's a four-story building, and it's a really tall floor plan?
It's a really tall floor plan, yeah.
Well, I'm not saying that four stories is 100 feet, but you just have to look at...
No, it's just a sort of, oh, it's 100 feet, and you're, it's like you're just asking for a lot of height, but we're representing four stories.
We'll go ahead and keep going. No, I just, it was just a, I mean, in terms of feedback, you didn't, you know, the comments from the last meeting are not inapplicable to this idea. I mean, I think there's, you know, putting 100-foot buildings in this space is going to engender an enthusiastic response from the community, shall we say? And probably not in a good way. So, you got an awful lot of surface parking in here, and it would seem like a more potentially attractive concept as far as the community is concerned. attractive concept as far as the community is concerned. I don't really know about, you know, the economics, but less height, less surface parking, more open space application. A lot of what was up in those pictures looks nice, the community gardens kind of thing is good, the conceptualization of the community spaces, I think, works, but I, I think this much height, this much density, this much surface parking is asking for, would be a challenging sell, if you have, in my opinion, for what that's worth.
I think also, talking about the open space, just sort of more relation to, to the west, I think what you were saying is that there's a plan for trails. How do you, how do you get sort of a network of green to really sort of course through this, you know, connecting to that South Suburban area? Right now, it just looks like there's a sort of a major, maybe a major one where the pool is now, but nice to see some other sort of fingers of green.
I have a question come in. So looking at Santa Fe Drive, ingress and egress on that southern end, it looks like then there would be a new ingress, egress down river that is south of Mineral.
Nichols, Nichols Avenue.
Is it Nichols? Okay. It's nothing right now, is it?
No.
No. You know, that, that's another concern, I think, just in general, Santa Fe traffic, the dangerousness of adding more ingress and egress along Santa Fe Drive. And I realize, if you actually developed this property this way, you've got to have some points to be about entering that site, but that, that's a, that's been a huge challenge along Santa Fe, with some of the new developments.
Is there a creek, excuse me, is there a creek that's bisecting this side or a ditch? That, I think there's one, one going, one going north-south, parallel to Santa Fe, the city ditch, and then is there one going east-west, coming out of the higher elevation areas?
Talking about the north end?
I was thinking coming off, underneath Santa Fe, like further down south?
There's on, further south, not on this particular thirty-three acres.
There's something that goes.
Could you repeat that, Josh?
I don't believe that that underpass that you're talking about, that, or I don't think it's underpass on this side of the highway, there's something that goes, there's some accesses, you know what I mean, like driveways right now that come onto Santa Fe. One comes from the east, goes underneath the railroad, right, and comes onto Santa Fe. And then there's one closer down to where that white barn is and that residential. Those are, I believe, below the, this property.
Below this property.
Yeah, yeah. They're on the other, the southeast.
So the main, the main waterway then is the one parallel to the city ditch.
Yeah, and the city, it's the Inglewood ditch that goes more south.
So that would all have to be hight?
Yes, I believe that the city of Inglewood, in preliminary discussions, I believe that's their preference, but that would all be worked out, you know, even once we got into the actual
And then we approved a rejiggering of the north side along Mineral, right, where there's a, there's going to be a bridge, sort of, where the water's going to go beneath that Platte Parkway on the south side. And then there's like a culvert that goes under Santa Fe, but it's not enough for a heavy rainstorm, so it would flood Santa Fe if.
Right, for the stormwater, you, you, we figured that piece out, that's correct. This is not showing that piece.
But that work hasn't been done yet.
That's not.
There was like a step down, yeah.
Save most of my critique for down the road here, but opening salvos here. Commercial on parcel, parcel D and parcel C, or E, I should say, directly against, on the west side of the Platte River Parkway. You've got residential on the east side, it's obvious that they're looking to flip-flop that. I can't understand why commercial was, was zoned for parcel D and E in the first place and not put more on, on Santa Fe. The other, the other initial point is the allowable heights for parcel E and parcel G are seventy feet, parcel C is fifty feet, parcel B is seventy feet. I could see there being some porstrating and trying to get rid of some of the, some of the allowable height away from the river and more towards Santa Fe. Okay, keep, keep going here, guys.
Question about the context, there was a plan that was developed, or started to be developed in twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, I think Puma was involved in. Did that, was that ever adopted or did it just go away to the answer site, the larger answer site, not this?
So two things, I'm going to guess, so you kind of combined those. So my guess, based on the, the use of the consultant Puma, we, the city, started mineral station master plan, if you will, with Puma, and that then transformed into the framework document that was approved by this board here several months ago. But the, so the, the family that owns South Santa Fe Park, the whole thing, I'll just get back, whoops, just a couple if I remember where things are. This is owned by one family, and certain family members own some parcels and certain family members own other parcels. And so generally, the seventy-seven acres is owned by one portion of the family and the thirty-three, until it was sold to Evergreen, was owned by the other portion. And so in that, twenty-fourteen or fifteen, fifteen, I think, or sixteen, rather, the, the southern portion of the property was under contract by a developer called Heinz, and they had actually submitted an application and they didn't pursue it, but it was for the, for the portion down below. So maybe that's what you're thinking? And that was eventually withdrawn?
Yeah, I think it was the TOD effort.
It might be, oh, we're going to.
No, really.
Well, I guess a couple of things. I assume multifamily again is going to mean apartment, and, well, it says apartment. So I guess a question is, you know, the possibility of some sort of mix of housing stock consistent with, you know, the comp plan and the various neighborhood plans and so forth and so on. I mean, it's not like we don't have, as has been pointed out repeatedly, a fair amount of multifamily rental units market rate at this point, but maybe we don't have as much condo or townhome or so forth and so on. So orienting more towards an ownership product as opposed to a rental product could be viewed potentially as desirable. But I guess the other question I had was the floodplain mitigations. As you're going, I don't remember exactly where the floodplain, I don't know if it comes up to that orange line or if it, it seems to me it did and, and it's a legitimate issue, and so what do we know about mitigation aspects of that? Do we know anything at this point? I mean, if you're going to put residential on the west side, has anybody, has there been, what's the contemplation at this point in terms of how to account for the possible attributes of a floodplain in that area?
Well, so remember that special exception. So this map appears, but old how the floodplain would work, but that special exception, I think that we technically kind of refigured that out into be a more manageable situation. So, and, and any developments, you know, will, shouldn't be in that area, would have to be certain requirements to be outside of any flood situation or build to withstand it. So, I mean, those are good comments to make, just in general, to say that that's a concern and you want to make sure, right, that, that they're adhering to what they need to technically to ensure the safety of residents and whatnot, right? I think that. Because think about it, it's just your general feedback. Well, it's probably good to grill me somewhat, but I think it's more of a general comment.
Right. So I would agree with you, just sort of a variety of housing options would be attractive. I mean, there's, there's a, it looks like there's a senior, proposed senior center, so could you imagine sort of living here, renting here early on, but then also seeing, oh, gosh, there's other housing products that maybe I could buy that are closer to the river, and I really love this community, so maybe eventually I'll, yeah. Assisted, I guess, age restricted. It's kind of an interesting idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Also, maybe that just also sets up for how the height works, that where if you, as you get closer to the river, your two-story community, you're allowed to sort of build up towards Santa Fe.
Right, right.
Talk a little bit generally, I took a few notes. I just had a quick look at the Platte River Vision Plan. I'd urge folks to have a look at page forty-eight of that plan, which talks about Reach Seven. There's also a couple other places in that plan that talk about how this site could be used as additional buffer area to that open space. And that gets to sort of an urban design comment where there's some connectivity to that open space, but the connectivity is really through a private, likely fenced pool area, doesn't truly connect to the potential trail system that could be along the river. The existing zoning doesn't really account for the light rail station, it was done so long ago, but whatever rezoning occurs here should account for the fact that this is really close to the mineral light rail station. It's not clear that the sketch plan does account for that. You know, they're proposing a number of drive-through restaurants closest to the light rail, you're not really putting people in a true walking connectivity to the light rail station. Some comments about the height, a hundred feet is much too tall for what the proposal identified. If someone's going to be proposing a height like that, I'd like to see photo simulations, what's it really look like from Jackass Hill, from the east side of Santa Fe. We have the technology, we can see those. And if someone is swinging for the fences and wants a hundred-foot height, maybe trying to attack, attract a hospital or something, I noticed that was on the approved uses or the, the proposed list of uses, then, you know, using a photo simulation to show that and how that could relate to the site would be beneficial. The proposal masses buildings right up to the open space, although I acknowledge that, you know, this is just one way it could develop, that's not necessarily a good thing. It's, you know, there's opportunities there to perhaps, you know, feather that in a bit, particularly if someone's asking for a hundred feet of height. The vision book does a nice job of showing things that are called for in the Santa Fe planning document, the Santa Fe corner plan, that sort of barn vernacular, I'll let an architect name it better than I can. But whatever proposal comes in, I'd like to see it tied more directly to that plan. What elements of that plan is this proposal incorporating? And, yeah, the, the main connection seems to just, you know, be aligned into a private pool area, it doesn't truly connect to the open space. I noticed auto sales on the proposed list of uses, that would probably be a no for me, unless they're intending these to be like, you know, more of the indoor auto sales, you know, Tesla dealer in the mall or something. One thing about the proposal that I'd like to see in a narrative, you know, please talk about, you know, why isn't the current zoning going to work for this site? Is there, are there, is there a market study to back up that this zoning is just not a good fit for the site? What is the city getting in exchange for this reduction in open space or this increase in height? What are the sort of, you know, sort of the quality elements that this is bringing to the table in exchange for those things? I think that, oh, one last really nitpicky thing is the, the site plan looked like it had too many signs on Santa Fe, those could probably be consolidated, given that this is meant to be kind of a, simply developed site. So just threw a lot out there for comment.
Okay, I'm going to jump in with both barrels here. Not beat around the bush, I found this to be a mediocre plan at best. We have, what we have here is ill-suited increases in allowable uses over the, over the current allowable uses. The height goes up, floor area ratio goes up, setbacks go down, open space goes down. The question I have when I look at this is, what's in it for the city? Very little, we're giving away the farm here. We've got, they, they talk about mixed use, I'm not sure what that means. Mixed use to me means mixing the uses. We have a development with a commercial facing Santa Fe, as soon as you cross the road, whoops, it's all residential. Why not mix things up? Why not make an exciting, vibrant plan here? That's creative. Somebody takes a family, goes to the movie, goes to a restaurant, say, on the east side, and then after the movie, after dinner, they stroll down the, the promenade, stop for an ice cream, go down to the river. Oh, they can't do that because there's residential clubhouse, four-story apartment buildings blocking the access to the river. This is a fabulous site, the best site that Littleton has. It has everything, it has light rail, it has access from two major roads, it's got views, it's got the river, it's got, it's got everything. And we can't screw it up. The use chart, let's get into the use chart. Basically, it looks like what they did is took the city's entire use chart, checked off every possible use as a use by right. Let's talk about some of the things that they, that they checked off. Raising of crops, are you kidding me? Farming and ranching? Please. Residential currently restricted, restricted, well, I had parcel C and E, but that's wrong. Currently, the parcel, residential is restricted to G and B.
B and D.
B and D, I'm sorry, or B and G.
Whatever it is.
Whatever, yes, okay. Some of the, some of the other uses that they're asking for, drive, drive-through restaurants? Maybe. Flea markets? No. Car dealership, I looked at that, there's absolutely no way that I, that would get my boat. I've recently done some car dealership shopping and you go behind car dealerships, the front building on Broadway, and there's a sea of, of inventory ready for sale. Totally unacceptable. What kind of primitive use is that for this beautiful site? Off-track bedding, perhaps. Manufacturing on all parcels? No. Brewery, we already have a brewery, but a smaller one, perhaps. Hospitals, medical denton, we have that elsewhere. Why is that checked off on the, on the use list? Home childcare on this site? I don't think so. The arrangement, the arrangement of the, of the spaces and the uses, it's not mixed use, the, the public is cut off from the Mary Carter Greenway and the river. Retail on one side of the Parkway, residential the other side. It has no imagination. This is a gem of a site in Littleton. This is our last chance to make this what I think can be a regional draw, not just for Littleton, but also for areas, especially to the, to the west of us. There's no there there out west. This can be a there, this can be a location for those people that live outside Littleton to come to here, spend their money, help our sales receipts. The citizens, last, a few other points, the citizens guard this river with their lives like no other, no other site in Littleton. And done right, this development could make the streets of South Platte look like a strip mall. And right now, I see kind of a strip center here that, that can, can be. And right now, I see kind of a strip center here that, that can be made so much better. And by the way, the developer can make a hell of a lot more money if they use a little more imagination. So, continue on.
So, I'll pick up from there, Mark. You look at the Littleton Citywide Plan, part two, there's some diagrams, you know, transformative action highlight the river. And I agree, it doesn't highlight the river. And there's a little concept drawing on that page eleven that shows something more about what Mark's talking about, something real creative that orients towards the river, that connects pedestrians, bikes, and passersby to the river and uses that as focus of the whole development. Utilizing any kind of cross-waterways, don't pipe it. Keep it on the surface within, you know, allowable agreements to the water owner's rights and utilize that as a feature in the development. There's all kinds of creative things you can do. I don't think a four-story congregant care facility that's in the site is shown on the concept plan. And I agree with Mark, there's a much more creative way to do this instead of just separating based on this new South Platte River Parkway, commercial one side, residential the other side. I'd like to see more curved linear structures that kind of mirror the bends in the river, just out of the box, outside of your conventional development, rectangular structures, kind of plop down in a, just a ton of surface parking that is on a site that is right now just flat in the current uses map. So, could be done.
I'll join in. I, I look at this and I'm like, what are they thinking? This magnificent river, I mean, all the same things that Mark was saying, this location is astonishing. There's so much to offer here. The community values this river and this does nothing for that river. It, when I look at this, what I'd want to see is on the property line, call the trees as you could get to hide it from the river. And that's not the purpose here. If you're gonna have this much asphalt, please don't call it a parkland. Don't think twenty percent of open space, you know, everything here is take, take, take. I want thirty more feet. I want to get rid of your open space. I want every possible, what was that one of? Batch concrete, non-commercial concrete batch plant? If, if, if someone is coming to take a look at a piece of property that already has a tremendous amount of uses, you know, when you look at the list of what can be here, there's a lot of things that can be done. To add to it, just to add to it, it doesn't make sense to me to show a plan that has four stories but ask for a hundred. What do they, what do they really want? To go for fifty dwelling units per acre? I mean, what they're showing here doesn't match what they're asking for, which makes me wonder, what will they really do if given all these other options? So, I'm just gonna kind of quickly go through some of the corridor, Santa Fe corridor. Develop the landscaped edge along the west side of Santa Fe Drive. I don't see that. Provide substantial landscape buffering along the South Santa Fe Drive. That's part of that. Parking fifty feet setback and properly screened in landscape. I don't know. Preserve the quality of the open spaces and natural features utilizing selected acquisition increased setbacks and land use controls. Discourage, policy four, discourage residential land uses immediately adjacent to the South Plan higher value business park and commercial uses. I, I'm not seeing where this is fitting our corridor plan. High-quality employment-based land use area. Concentrate major retail and office development. And there specifically talk about Mineral Avenue here. I don't know. I'm not seeing the corridor plan being presented here and I'm not seeing, you know, in our citywide plan where it talks about preserving, enhancing the river, making this a place for recreational areas, making this a place for restaurants, making this a place for the community to have activity with. I, I don't see that here. I, I'm kind of actually quite confused by this proposal. I'll just say what Mark said. Where does this benefit the city for asking for the move and not giving this a quality area? Though I will say, I love the architectural design aspects that they presented. Those are glorious, really great stuff. Otherwise, I, I find this very confusing ask.
On page fifteen, you've got all this farmland, which is really great, but it doesn't really match what, what is in the concept plan. But as, as Robin said, I don't know if this concept plan is a reality or not. I mean, this just looks like something they took from somewhere else and slapped it in here. It's, it's lazy. It's like every other thing I've ever seen. I mean, if you go down to a place like Sedona or Santa Fe, you see something like this on page fourteen where you've got multi-levels, you've got some pergla, you've got some great landscaping. There is no multi-level here in this plan. There's, it's just not here. You know, I, I like some of these designs, the barn look, you know, kind of like they did down at the Designs by Sundown space, and they put some really cool architectural designs. Looking at this plan, I don't see any of that either. They've just got a bunch of four-story square boxes. You know, there is one picture that I think we will see, which is on page, at the top of page ten, where it's two tall buildings with a narrow space between them and no views of the people who live there. I, I think that's more what this looks like. I mean, you could really have, like Mark said, you could really have something iconic, something that would draw people from all over, and it's just not here. It looks, it just, it really looks terrible. But obviously, this is a concept plan. It's not really what's gonna be there. But, you know, the front of this, the front of this thing with a barn and open space and mounts behind, that's definitely not gonna be there as far as I can tell. It just, I, I think, and, and then going back to the zoning table, I'm not even gonna mention any of the uses, because I think Mark's right, he was through all those in there. I just don't see us increasing the height, increasing the setbacks, certainly not decreasing the open space. I mean, if you did this right, you would have a ton more open space than was required and you'd still have a lot more space scattered through here. I mean, you don't need seas of parking anymore. You know, think outside the box. Make it look good. I mean, the other thing that Aspen Grove lost out on was drawing people from light rail to the site and you could really, and build a pedestrian bridge over mineral and orient it at least to some extent towards, towards the, to the light rail to draw people over there. You'd get a lot of business from that. You know, mix it up, don't, you know, I agree with residential on one side, retail on the other. It's just an old concept that just doesn't fly anymore. I, I think, you know, you just look towards the future instead of looking, and this is a, a design for the past. I just don't see it being desirable to anyone.
Get going. So, can I jump in? Yeah, beyond what the framework has established for the expectations for this site, there's three things that I would look for. One is recognize that you do have a transit-oriented development opportunity here with respect to orienting the density not as evenly across the site. It's just kind of spread out here. And I think there's an opportunity to go to that Santa Fe mineral corner and make it more connected to, it's one of the busiest stations on the light rail network there. And it's a great opportunity, as others have said, to draw people to the site, to, to justify some retail and commercial uses in that area and also make it more convenient for people to live there. And then also, you know, recognize the TOD aspect of it and also recognize the river aspect. It's really important to me. I like the idea of usually before of green fingers that come in from, from a linear open space like the South Platte River where it comes into, it brings the open space into the site, allows you to manage stormwater, water quality, the green infrastructure, if you will, trails that connect from the open space into the development. There are just some great, great opportunities that allow for that sort of density away from the river toward the high-traffic area, reduce the density height scale as you get closer to the river. And then, yeah, something's gotta be done about all that parking. There's way too much surface parking shown here. Now, that might meet the requirements of the city right now and the city's not real flexible, as we know, on relieving parking requirements if that's associated with the uses. But structured parking certainly should be considered and other creative ways to organize those spaces so that the open space can be more linear and connected and you have more opportunities for pedestrian streets. Those big parking areas just, they're not pedestrian-friendly, they're not environmentally-friendly, they provide a lot of surface runoff for stormwater right next to a river that we're trying to clean up. So, I think there's some great opportunities, recognize the TOD, recognize the river, and be creative about the way that the parking is associated with the land uses.
I, I agree with so many of the comments here, but I especially agree with Craig in saying that this is a great opportunity to, to utilize the light rail station and really accent it. Anyway, this doesn't do that in any shape or form, but I think too that's, I'm real concerned about, since I've been on this commission, which has not been very long, most every proposal I have seen has apartments, rental units, high density, as well as active adult apartments. And I really wonder if that's, is that the flavor of the year, this year, perhaps? But really, what is the demand for that? What is the future demand for that? I'm not convinced that it's there. But we've not really seen a lot of data or statistics or anything to, to tell us that it is. And obviously, developers think it's there because they're reading, he said consistently, we have several active adult apartment, you know, developments proposed right now. And my neighbors were saying, who's gonna move in these? I'm not, and I'm an active adult, probably who they think I'm in that demographic. But anyway, beside the point, we need more, I think we need more data around really what is the demand for this kind of density. The second, we just heard a presentation, I know some folks here who, you know, bring this to table, did, but about the trends toward experiences and authenticity and, you know, that we're looking, really people are looking for that place that draws them for an experience or something. And nothing about this shows any kind of an experience. That level of parking that has to accommodate the multifamily is, I just don't think it's gonna fly. That's gonna be a huge point of contention with the community. And all this surface parking, really, if you think about it, that's all you're gonna see from that corridor, right? It's parking asphalt, the lighting, sun reflecting off of that and the heat and just, I think those are the main ones. But, you know, the traffic in general, I think, is gonna be a huge, huge concern in the community. And Santa Fe already is so, you know, we struggle with Santa Fe. It's dangerous. It's overpopulated already. So, I think that's, that's just a very few of my concerns about it.
I'd touch on something, just, I forgot to say something nice. The architectural, the booklet that put, got put together, I thought, had some really nice exhibits of the types of architecture they're looking for. And I know I critiqued the connection fully to the, kind of the existing river corridor, but, you know, there is a trail connection that's designed to connect to the Santa Fe Trail. It's just a bit more meandering than would be preferable and doesn't tie directly to the open space. The proposal does include that sort of live-work-play component with the office, and I thought they did a nice job in pieces of it, like how the, they, there was a proposed kind of plaza, central plaza that lined up with the pool in the apartment area. So, there were some, some nice kind of, you know, grace notes within the plan. But, you know, overall, I, I agree with a lot of the comments about, you know, relating it more to the light rail, seeking opportunities to actually maybe connect to mineral, you know, there's, you know, options for that. But I did want to compliment them on the, sort of the vision book they put together and, you know, some elements of the plaza. And it does speak to some of the comments earlier, earlier hearing about how, you know, we are looking for things other than retail anchors to anchor a development. And I think they're trying to do that with the, you know, the senior housing and with the apartments here.
We need to also keep in mind about the mineral station area framework, talking about the pellets coming up and how is that gonna affect this area? We can't say, we don't know. This is something that CDOT's gonna be taking care of, of course, along with the communities along here, but you know that's gonna affect this area.
One point I'll make, you know, we can dig in our heels and say, no of this, no of that. I already said some of my no's. But this can be a collaboration between the city and the developer in that they, we trade. We get things that we want and we move on things that maybe aren't perfect, but the developer needs. It's a trade, it's a win-win. And we get the project that is, that Littleton wants and is willing to compromise to get. We dig in our heels and they could go into the building department tomorrow and get permits for this antiquated nineteen eighty-five zoning and it ain't gonna be what, what Littleton wants to see, but it's a use by right. So, a good decision and compromise is a necessity here. We are, you know, we fight for what we believe in and all of us know the site much better than the developer that's come in. I've been involved with this site since the Santa Fe Corridor Study way, way back when. And it, but it takes compromise here to, to get what the city wants. Bruce, you haven't really swung the, swung the axe yet.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm...
Ready to go?
No, I'm in agreement with the, I mean, a few comments, but no, I'm in agreement with the points raised. You guys are spot on in terms of, you know, it's a project, but it could be a much better project relative to the nature of the parcel. I think your comments specifically were quite right. So, yeah, I think that's all I'd say.
I like your comment, Mark, about the city working with the developers on this. I don't see any problem with asking for certain things, but you expect to be getting certain things also. If you, you ask for a hundred-foot... If you, you ask for 100 foot, why? And how does it benefit the city, like you were saying? If you're asking to reduce things, why? And how does that benefit the city? I think it is an important idea, that your last comment about working together. We can work together as a community, as with, you know, having this developed. This could be a really magnificent development where everybody's happy instead of wondering what the heck is this about. So, I appreciate that comment.
Anyone else? Think that gives our developer, which I assume is here, a little bit of inkling of what are, what we would like to see. Is this, are they also gonna be going to city council with the deed war process?
Yes.
And when does that happen?
I think it's July. If July, I just want to tell you the wrong date. July. Hold on. You got my calendar? It is in July. One minute here, let me just pull it up. It's the, whatever that, oh, here we go.
Sometime in July.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna tell you when. July 10th. July 10th.
Show up at all council meetings and eventually it'll, it'll happen.
July 10th. It's in the sap indication. I just wanted to verify it's the right date.
Did I see that the Bellevue plan was gonna go on the 17th?
That is probably correct because member council, they do every other, generally they have a regular meeting, and then the next week it's a study session. So, that would make sense. 10, study session for this, the next meeting would be the regular meeting.
I think one more comment. I've been putting down people's pity quotes that I think merit. David, your quote's the best. This is a design from the past. What we want is a design for the future, an exciting design for the future, for the future, not a design from the past. Any other comments? Then, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.